All right. It looks like we have everyone here. If you could mute, that would be wonderful. I mean, did we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals? Commissioner Toyah Seconds, Commissioner Salt.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah.
Yes.
Great. We are reconvened. I'm being told I'm muted, but I don't think I'm muted. Okay, good. All right, great. With that, Counselor Fatikas, if you're on and you could update us on the whereabouts of your clients and witnesses.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Plunkett has called in by phone. He was on a few minutes ago. I believe he's still on. Tom, are you there?
Mr. Plunkett, please press star six on your phone to unmute. He is here. I see him. He has to press star six. Chairman, do you want me to... I have two. He's, I think, dialing from two numbers, so I just allowed the other number to talk. And, Mr. Plunkett, I'm sorry, can you please press star six on your phone now? There we go.
Okay. Mr. Plunkett, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great, perfect. Welcome. All right, Nick, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you again, Chairman, for the record. Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here today on behalf of Mr. Tom Plunkett. Mr. Plunkett owns the subject property at 2510 West George Street. The subject site consists of a triangular lot that lacks alley access. The 3,666 square foot site is currently vacant and unimproved. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new four-story, four-unit residential building. In order to permit the building on the triangular lot, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the required rear setback for floors containing residential units from 30 feet to zero. There will be two witnesses testifying today on behalf of the applicant, in this case, the applicant, Mr. Tom Plunkett, and our project architect, Mr. John Hannah. Tom?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Thomas Plunkett, 2505 West George Street, Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. And do you swear or affirm and tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Tom, again, you own the subject property at 2510 West George?
Yes, I do.
And your plan is to develop the triangular property with a new four-story, four-unit residential building, is that right?
That's correct.
And it's your understanding that variation, a variation, is required in this case because of the lot's triangular shape, right?
Yes, correct.
Otherwise, the proposal meets the setback and height requirements of the underlying zoning district, is that right?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Hannah, are you there?
Yeah, I am.
John, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. John Hannah, President of Architect, Hannah Architects, Inc., 180 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois. I do swear to tell the truth.
All right, let me, let me, let me still ask you, Mr. Hannah. Do you swear to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And John, are you designed to propose building for the subject property?
I did.
And is your professional opinion that the lot's triangular shape and the lack of alley access together create the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case?
Oh, it does.
And even so, you believe the proposed building will be consistent and compatible with the neighboring buildings in the immediate area, assuming that the variation is approved, is that right?
That's correct.
And John, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
You did.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
It would.
And John, before I let you go, it's your understanding that because of the triangular lot, no matter what type of residential floor plate you propose, rear setback reductions are required, is that fair?
It's fair. It's true.
And, Mr. Chairman, our applicant's findings of fact stated that the economic hardship in this case is residential units are permitted use in the underlying district. Without the variation, there's no way for us to permit the residential units. That amounts to a significant hardship, much more than a mere inconvenience if the variations are not, or the variation is not approved. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members may have about the program.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. So on that last note you made, assumably, could, if not residential, could different type of development be made?
So we would be able to permit a same exact footprint, all commercial building? That would be what's permitted. And, Mr. Plunkett, do you believe that an all-commercial, four-story building would be a viable development?
No, it would not.
Not in today's market, correct?
No, absolutely.
And in fact, many of the neighboring buildings are either all residential or mixed use with a retail component on the first floor and then residential units above, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
And what, what type of conversations, if any, have been had with, with neighbors and members of the community?
Yeah, so Mr. Plunkett was actually, in a COVID-safe fashion, was able to obtain nine letters of support from immediate neighbors. Unfortunately, we didn't get all the responses back until after Monday's deadline. So Mr. Plunkett spoke to some of the immediate property owners, immediate residents, including some both unit owners and unit tenants, renters. And I believe we have a total of nine letters. Unfortunately, again, they're not part of our findings submitted, but we're not aware of any pending objection to our program.
Okay. Great. And I know you need a setback for any type of residential to be built on this building. Does it have to go to, would such setback have to go to zero, or would there be a way for a more minimal setback and still have residential?
No, my understanding is that at the apex of the triangle, at George and Elston, because there is no corresponding side, because it's a triangle and there are no corresponding side setbacks, it's an automatic zero setback condition on the lot. Even so, I believe on, if you go to the, the proposed site plan on the exhibit, we are providing a little bit of a three-foot setback on the north edge of our property. And because we don't have alley access, we designed our parking garage to continue the, the block along George Street. So the short answer is no, because of the technical, again, the triangular lot shape, but in terms of practicality, we are trying to provide a little bit of a setback, three feet. We can't without, because of the parking requirement, we have, we have to go to zero along George Street.
Okay. Okay, additional questions from the board? With that pause, I'm hearing none. So, okay, we'll take this under consideration. And, Mr. Plunkett, thank you for your time and patience in figuring out the tech.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. Counselor, we're now jumping to, I believe, 64-21-Z.
Brett, I believe Mr. Alan Leskiv is calling in. He was calling from his home.
Yeah, yes, he's here.
Okay, thank you. And Elise as well. Elise was on previously. She's back on.
Okay.
So Chairman, if I can do my introduction and then we can swear in the witnesses?
Yep, great.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Jobin and Elise Gremius. The applicants own the subject property at 1833 West Erie. The subject site consists of a single zoning lot improved with a two-story, two-unit residential building and a detached garage. The applicants live in this floor and rent the first-floor apartment on the open market. The reason we're here today is because the applicants are proposing to reorganize the exterior staircases that provide access to the rooftop located above the principal building. The, so if you're looking at the rear of the site plan, thank you very much, the, or the existing condition photos, the program or the proposal would be to take down the spiral staircase and extend the, the other, the metal staircase located along the west side of the building. It's, it's a little bit difficult to see right there. It would be essentially following the utility pole straight back. Otherwise, the program that we're proposing maintains the existing footprint of both the principal building and the detached garage. In order to permit the second-story staircase or the staircase extension, the applicants are seeking variations to reduce the west-side setback and the combined side setback total on the subject lot. I have Elise here, again, present as the, one of the property owners. I also have Alan now present as our project architect. If you could swear them in, I could begin questioning.
Okay, sounds good. Miss... All right, Ms. Gremius, if you're present, please state your name and address.
Yes, Elise Gremius, 1833 West Erie Street, Unit 2, Chicago, Illinois, 60622.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm and tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And, Mr. Leskiv, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Alan Leskiv, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois, 1701 South First Avenue, Maywood, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I swear.
Great.
And Elise, is it true that you and your husband own the subject property at 1833 West Erie?
Yes.
And the, again, the property consists of a non-conforming, two-unit residential building?
Yes.
And in this case, your relief is really limited to the exterior staircase located along the west side of the building, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And more, more specifically, you're proposing to remove the spiral staircase located at the rear of the building and extend the existing metal staircase up to the building's roof, is that true?
Yes.
And the reason you're doing this is really out of a safety concern for you and your family, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And, and to further that, your, while you and your husband are able to navigate the staircase, some of your older family members, as well as some of your younger nieces and, I believe, nephews just find the staircase a little bit troubling, right?
Yes, and in regards to also moving any type of furniture up there onto the rooftop.
Right. So instead of going up the spiral staircase, you'd like to follow the existing staircase or the, the footprint of the existing staircase up, is that right?
Correct.
And it's, again, your understanding that the variations will allow this proposed staircase to extend exactly vertical over the existing staircase?
Yes.
A lot of staircases, I apologize. Elise, is it, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify with that testimony, be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Alan, if you could please restate your name and address for the record?
Alan Leskiv, 1701 South First Avenue, Maywood.
And again, you prepared the, the building plan or the program for the proposed staircase on the west side of the lot, is that right?
Yeah, I did.
And is it your professional opinion that both the substandard width dimension, together with the existing non-conforming exterior stair footprint, create the practical difficulties or particular hardship in this case?
Yes.
Even so, you believe the proposed reconfiguration will be consistent with some of the other neighboring residential buildings in the immediate area, is that right?
Yeah, it would be.
And in fact, if we look at some of the similar staircase configurations, Chairman, on the photo of the rear of the property, two of our neighbors to the west, I believe it's 1835 and 18, that would be 31 West Erie, have, just, just on the other side of the utility pole, have a similar rear stair system in, in place of a spiral stair, is that right? Alan?
Yes.
Thank you. And is it your understanding, Alan, that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify with that testimony, be consistent with the statements we provided? And Chairman, before I conclude and speaking to the economics again, this is a used space owner occupied type change. It's not motivated by financial return. Even so, we've provided the board with information about the project. We're estimating start to finish hard costs, soft costs, about a $50,000 investment simply to remove the existing spiral staircase and extend or reconfigure the access on the west side. And again, it's motivated not by financial gain or return expectation, but instead use and functionality for the homeowner.
Okay. And Nick, really quick, will both units still have access to the roof, or is the extension make it so only the second unit has access to the roof?
Elise, can you answer that?
Yep, yep. So it's our private rooftop access. We can only access it from our private bedroom, master bedroom. And the way that Alan made the drawings is the exact same way. They can only access the rooftop from our private master balcony.
Okay, got it.
Chairman, that, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the program.
Okay, great. Okay, I think this makes sense to me. When I was reviewing, it was, it was tricky to see. We need better photos. I think that can be a lesson for everyone, a lot of lawyers today across the line, but like, I had to zoom way in on this. So now that I've done so.
Just, just on that point, the photos should show, again, one staircase on the west side of the lot. We're proposing a staircase that goes right over it. It's an existing non-conforming condition. We're trying to replicate it. We're not making it any worse than it already is. We're also not changing the footprint of the physical building structure or the garage. Those stay the same. It's putting a stair over a stair.
Okay, got it. Got it. And so am I summarizing the stated hardship correctly that it's, I mean, it's kind of the safety and convenience issue, or is there something?
There's certainly this, there's certainly the safety component. We would obviously prefer to have a typical stair access as opposed to the spirals there. But there's also, don't forget that this is a slightly substandard lot. It's only 24 feet wide. And the reason that's important or a hardship in this case is it limits the technical setback for the width of the lot. And this case specifically requires side setback relief, and that specifically relates to the width of the lot. If we had another foot, I'm not certain we'd be able to replicate the proposed staircase, but the extent of the relief would be reduced because we have more width to work with. We don't have that width, and therefore, the, the reduction is as proposed.
Okay. We have more questions from the board? All right, sounds like none. We will take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Sir, I appreciate your, your patience today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, let's now move to matter 65-21-Z. And that is at 5326 North Bowmanville Avenue. And Paul, let me know when you're on.
Hey. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yep.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Colpak with offices at 6767 North Milwaukee Avenue. Today, I represent the applicant Clement Carrabo James and his wife, Shana. As my other witness, I will be having the architect, Mr. Sinsook Kang.
Great. Do you want me to give them forward right now?
Please, please.
All right, Mr. Jackson, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Clement Carrabo Jackson. The address is 5326 North Bowmanville Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60625.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Great. And Sinsook Kang, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Sinsook Kang. Address is 6825 North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois, 60712.
Thank you, Mr. Kang. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
All right, great.
Thank you. The applicant today is requesting variations to reduce the front setback from the minimum of 20 feet 77 inches to that of 11 feet 33 for the proposed two-story addition to the existing two-story, single-family residence. Again, this is not a proposal to make money. Rather, the Mr. and Mrs. Jackson have added another addition to their family, and the current home is not adequate for the parents and two children. The subject zoning property is presently classified in an R3 residential, single-unit detached housing district, has a lot area of 8,593 feet or approximately 1.95 acres. Zoning parcel is a trapezoid, shaped with the north property line measuring 50 feet in width, south property line along North Bowmanville Avenue measures 57.25 feet wide. These property line measures 129.64 feet in depth, and the property on the west measures 157.82. The building presently has only 1,820 square feet of the two-story, single-family dwelling for an FAR of 0.21. If the variation is granted, the applicant will construct the two-story addition with, will contain approximately 730 square feet, which would then allow a 2,550-foot square building. The property is also, does not have alley access, and therefore, a curb cut is being provided along North Bowmanville Avenue. Reviewing the county assessor's office records, this property is at least 140 years old. The setback that was originally agreed upon for this property is 18 feet 6, 18.62 feet, which is already less than the 20.77 feet required. As far as the characteristics in the neighborhood, the building at 53, and I actually was the attorney for this, the building at 5336 North Bowmanville received two variations to be able to construct the two-story building. And based on that, we don't, we do not feel that this would adversely affect the characteristics of the neighborhood. Clement? Are you available?
Yes, I'm right here.
Clement, as I mentioned, you and your wife are currently and a child currently occupy this property, is that correct?
And our two children, that's correct.
You have just had a new addition to your family.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I know you've been asking for, even though this is not for a developer, you've asked for some financial information. Clement, you purchased this property for approximately $540,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if this variation is granted, you've budgeted approximately $250,000 for this addition, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I have no further questions for this client. Oh, one other, I'm sorry. We have submitted an affidavit on your behalf. You've read that affidavit and you've signed that affidavit. And if you were asked to continue to testify, you would testify in substantial compliance with that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
No further questions for Mr. Jackson. Can I call Mr. Kang?
Yep, go right ahead.
Mr. Kang?
Yes.
Would you please state your name?
Sinsook Kang.
And you are a licensed architect?
Correct.
State Illinois, and you are the architect, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kang, could you explain to the board the issues that you had in designing this addition? The hardship that you encountered?
The client wishes to add, expand their bedrooms and add a bedroom upstairs next to the existing two-story element. But there's an existing driveway eating the rear detached garage. So the addition comes up to the existing driveway. And to get two-bedroom addition, we couldn't really push it back to the required setback. And so we're requesting the variance to allow for the 11 foot 4 inch to the corner of this addition. The existing house east of this project already has their corner of the property, nearest corner is 10.75 feet from the property line. And a couple houses down for the east is 11.97 feet to the nearest corner. So it's not inconsistent with what's out at the street there already. And, but it'd be hard to push this any further back. This, in the rear of the house is a one-story kitchen element. And pushing this further back will not interact with that one-story element, nor would it connect well with the existing bedrooms on the two-story element. So this is what we're proposing, the best route for the addition.
And, and so the lack of alley access certainly added to the hardships, is that correct?
Yes.
I have no... Let me just go further. Mr. Kang, I have submitted an affidavit on your behalf that I believe you have read and signed, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were asked to continue to testify, you testified in substantial compliance with that affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
And in your opinion, if, that these hardships create practical difficulties and the variations would be in conformity with the criteria set forth for variations under the city of Chicago zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions. We stand ready to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, great. A few that come to mind. So, Mr. Jackson, just to confirm, you, and this is low-hanging fruit, but you intend to continue living in this home, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. And, and so, while we're looking at hardship, there's a reality that even though it's a different shaped lot, it's still a very big lot. So if someone could make the argument that the size of the lot being generally bigger than most city lots doesn't overcome the hardship of the odd shape, can someone address that?
Mr. Kang, not only is because of the trapezoidal shape of the lot, but also the lack of alley access, could you expound on how that affects your design of this property?
That's correct. We do need that access to the rear garage from the front of the property. That limits us getting the house any wider. And, and the connection to the existing second floor is critical. They have existing bedrooms on the north and south end of the existing house. And this addition accommodates... this addition accommodates those areas to expand into. If this was pushed back, they would lose that connection to the existing second floor. So so we're not looking for any less than what the existing neighbors have, especially the one right next door. And 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 that's the design criteria for a lot conditions we have with the rear-loading garage from the front of the property.
Okay. And is the the existing building as it sits, is that in, is that legally non-conforming?
Under the current, yes, it is, because the, as I mentioned, this bill, this area is one of the first areas developed in Chicago, and this building's probably in excess of a hundred and twenty-five years old. And you can see that the, when it was constructed, it was constructed with a eighteen-foot setback. Currently, that would require twenty, so it is a non-conforming building as we speak, under the existing zoning.
Okay, okay, I got it. Additional questions from the board? All right, we're going to take this under consideration. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Kang for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Of course.
You so much.
And Counselor Colpak, I think we still have you. Yep, okay. So moving forward to matter sixty-six dash twenty-one dash Z and sixty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Colpak with offices at sixty-seven sixty-seven North Milwaukee Avenue. I have today the applicant Daniel Mihalewski, who is the manager of thirty-one thirty-nine North Central Park LLC, and his architect Edward Livanu. And I would ask that they be sworn in.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Mihalewski, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Daniel, are you on?
Hi, Paul. I am.
Good.
Sorry, the reaction, it's kind of slow. My name is Daniel Mihalewski. I'm with the property at thirty-one thirty-nine North Central Park Avenue.
Great. And Mr. Mihalewski, do you swear to tell, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Livanu, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, yes. My name is Edward Livano. I live at seven zero one seven North Street Avenue in Lincolnwood.
Thank you, Mr. Livano. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
As a point of housekeeping, we would request to be able to withdraw our variation request under sixty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z for the off-site parking to be reduced to spaces to two. What we've, what we've agreed to do is to take down the existing garage on that property and put a pad up, which would then put the property into compliance with three parking spaces.
Okay, got it. Yep. Thank you for the update. We'll consider that withdrawn.
Thank you. The subject property consists of a single zoning lot containing two lots of record, lots twelve and thirteen. The zoning lot presently measures fifty by one twenty-six point three nine for a lot area of six thousand three hundred and nineteen feet. Individual individual lots of record are each twenty-five by one twenty-six point three nine. The lot of record number twelve is the existing three-and-a-half-story building, three-dwelling unit building that you see on the left of the property. The property on lot thirteen is improved with a accessory, small buildings approximately four hundred and sixty-eight feet. The variations that we are requesting today are all for lot twelve, which is the existing three-and-a-half-story building, three-dwelling unit building. We are requesting a front yard reduction from the required twelve point four one feet to the existing six point nine five feet. The north side reduction from the required two feet to that of the existing point zero eight feet, and the south side setback of two point four six feet for a combined total of three point three one feet versus the required five feet. As a background on this property, this property started off, this project started off early of two thousand and twenty. Both properties were zoned R-three, and we went to the community requesting a zoning change to four point five. The purpose of the zoning change was twofold. One, to allow the construction on lot thirteen of a three-unit three dwelling unit building, and to put the property located on lot twelve into compliance. We had a number of community meetings, and in fact, met with the community twice on site to explain why we needed the zoning change, and the fact that, once the zoning change was granted, that we would still have to come back and request variations to the existing building. Evidence of community support, this zoning change was approved in July of this year and to the four point five designation. The property on lot twelve, the building on lot twelve, again, was probably built certainly prior to the nineteen fifty-seven zoning code. That zoning code did not have front yard setbacks, and so we feel that the existing front yard setback of six point nine five was there at the beginning at the construction of this building. What has changed is the zoning code designation for this property. So when it was built, we have to assume it was compliance, because in search of the records, did not show that there were any violations, with the property was never brought into court regarding that front setback. And then on the side yard, again, I don't believe there were side yard variations back then. So we are making no changes at all to the existing building, but rather, under the current zoning, under the new zoning, four point five, we need to, these variations in order to put it into compliance. On that block, there's been at least five new projects that have been completed on that block. And typically, they're all have similar setbacks for the side yards and front yards. I can certainly, even though it wasn't required, we can go in for the economics of the building, the new building that's proposed on lot thirteen. If that would be appropriate for you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor, that would be great if we could get some economic analysis on this.
Yeah. Daniel, you purchased this property for approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a vacant piece of property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Daniel, based on your hard costs and soft costs, you intend on getting it'll be another one million, one hundred thousand dollars? Is that correct?
That is approximate with some changes due to recent changes in cost of construction, which
lumber is going up all the time.
Going up, yeah.
So you, you plan on spending a minimum of a million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And your total sellout will be approximately a million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars if everything goes well. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that would be give you approximately eleven and a half percent return on your investment. Is that correct?
Approximately, yes.
And you feel that that is an adequate return on your investment for you to take the risk of the of the construction loan and to develop this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions of the applicant. Could I bring out my architect?
Yep, that would be great, Paul. Thank you.
My pleasure. Edward, could you please state your name?
Yes, so my name is Edward Livano.
Edward, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Is that correct?
I am, yes.
And you were part of the negotiations with the aldermen and the community groups, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was at a couple of meetings.
And based on that, you designed this project, which is not the subject of the variations, but in order to be able to make this a buildable lot, we needed to have those variations taken care of today. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I have no further questions of my architect. As I mentioned here, that we had a number of meetings. The building has been around, the building in question on lot twelve has been there for at least ninety years. We believe that the existing setbacks that are there now have been there from the beginning of the building, and the hardship here is that subsequently, the zoning code has changed and has put the requirements of a larger setback and a combined yard setback on the lot twelve.
Okay, yeah, and just to, just to clarify, so the existing building, again, on this one, this is, it's legally non-conforming, right? Because of the changes. Okay, got it. Okay, questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. So with the vacant, the new vacant lot, the rezoning, there will be no variances requested for that new building. That will be built as of rate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Going back to Daniel?
Yes.
We, my office prepared an affidavit, which you had the opportunity to review and execute it. And if you were called to testify further, you testified substantial compliance with that affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Edward?
Yep.
You were also given a affidavit that was prepared by my office, setting forth your understanding. If you were, if you were called on to testify further, you testified substantial compliance with that affidavit. Is that correct?
Sure, yes.
I have no further questions. We will entertain questions from the board.
Okay, great. And any additional questions from the board? All right, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Everybody be well.
Yep, you as well.
Thank you.
All right. And so for a reminder for everyone, that was sixty-six dash twenty-one dash Z. Sixty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z was withdrawn. So let's now look forward to calendar number seventy dash twenty-one dash S, and I'll be reading the recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development. For calendar number seventy dash twenty-one dash S, the department of planning, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barbershop. Great. So marker Agnes, when you're present, let me know.
I'm, I'm present, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
My name's Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney, and I'm the attorney for the applicant. As you mentioned, this case involves a property at twenty-seven twenty-seven North Harlem Avenue. And relief, we're asking, it's an application for a special use for a barber shop. I have with me today on the call, I have my associate, Agnes Plekka. I also have, on behalf of the applicant, Christian Tarazzo, and I also have our expert witness, Joe Ryan. Would mention, just by way of historical interest, this building actually had been before the board once, many years ago. And for a different applicant, the board did grant a special use for a beauty shop. That was back in two thousand and ten. So there is some history for personal service at this site. With that, my first witness, Christian Tarazzo. Christian, are you on?
Yes, hello, I'm on.
Good, Christian. Would you state, oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Tarazzo, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Twenty-seven twenty-seven North Harlem Avenue, Christian Tarazzo.
Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
All right, great.
Good, thank you. Christian, are you the manager of the G O A T Parlor LLC and the owner?
Yes, correct.
Good. Is it true that you have an agreement to rent a first-floor commercial space at the building, existing building at twenty-seven twenty-seven?
Yes, correct.
And your plan is to operate a barber shop at this location?
Yes.
And you need the special use in order to get a business license for that, for that barber shop?
Yes, I do.
Good. Christian, you plan to manage the barber shop yourself?
Yes, definitely.
Good. You also plan to cut hair at the barber shop?
Yes.
The site plan we showed, you plan to have ten chairs in the barber shop?
Yeah, that is correct.
Christian, do you believe this barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Definitely.
And what hours of operation do you propose for the shop?
Um, I think it was nine AM to seven.
Well, just tell us, what do you, what do you think the shop would be open, which hours?
Not, I say nine AM to seven PM.
Okay, how many days a week?
Seven days a week.
Okay.
Sundays will be closing earlier, though, definitely.
Good. Christian, is it correct to say that, as long as we're suffering with this COVID virus situation, that you intend to take reasonable COVID precautions appropriate for a personal service business?
Yes, definitely.
Good. Christian, also true that you had signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony, and we filed that affidavit on your behalf?
Correct.
And if I continue to ask you questions, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'd rest on that affidavit unless you had questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tarazzo. And so I know you said that this will fit within the character of the community. Can you give us just a little visual of what your, what your neighbors are like, what, what this, what the street is like in general, if it's mostly business, or what else will be on it?
It's main, it's mainly business. I mean, I do have a neighbor, that stony house on, on Harlem on my block. And then, pretty much for the most part, it's pretty vacant where, next to the coffee shop would be the next busiest place. And they're not that busy, and it's an open lot, and it's no one there. And then at the corner, it's a, I think it's a small warehouse or factory or something there, but with parking, it's pretty, pretty good.
Okay. Oh, good. Yeah, good to know on parking. And can you also just give us a little bit more insight into your experience in the barber industry?
Yes, definitely. I mean, you know, with appointments and stuff like that, I mean, I've been cutting hair for years. Pretty much, you know, I like to be organized. And, you know, with COVID and everything, you know, pretty much, we would be setting up appointments a little bit more organized, where not too much foot traffic, not, we won't have crowded areas, barely, we don't have a waiting room for them, you know? Pretty much trying to not be as busy and have too many people in there, or, you know, also regarding the parking that we have.
Okay, great. And and as a follow-up, so when you were previously cutting hair, was it at a barber shop where you were employed and now you're opening? um you were employed and now you're opening your own, or um what was the setup?
Yes, definitely. I was a, I I definitely pretty much managed it. And you know, also worked there, and two, two of them, one of them for five years, one of them for I want to say like three.
Okay, great. Great. Any additional questions from the board for Mr. Tarazo? Oh, Mr. Tarazo, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you.
Chairman, uh a special use, I do have an expert witness, Joe Ryan.
Ah, yes, Mark, go right ahead, sorry.
Next witness, Joe Ryan. Joe, would you state your name and your address?
Uh Joseph M. Ryan, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Good, Joe. And did you prepare a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
Uh and Joe, you're familiar with the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood?
I am.
Could you talk a little bit about that surrounding neighborhood nearby the shop on Harlem?
Harlem Avenue is the main north-south uh business corridor in the area. There's a variety of one and two-story uh buildings at this, near this location, um you know, Harlem goes on all the way north past uh uh O'Hare, turns into Waikiki Road, the northern suburbs, and goes all the way out south past I eighty, so it's an established commercial corridor and um typical of of Chicago in that area, that it's one and two-story buildings, residential above, most of them are their uh personal service businesses or um uh small industrial-type properties, but primarily commercial.
Good. Joe, do you believe that a barber shop at this location would be care, would be compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Absolutely.
Joe, is also your opinion that a special use for a barber shop at this location would not not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
No, no.
Uh and Joe, uh supporting uh supporting materials to support those opinions are contained in the report that we filed on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you on this uh matter, your testimony would be consistent with the materials in your report?
Yes, it would be.
Uh good. Mr. Chairman, I uh I would rest with that unless you had questions of Joe.
Uh no, any well, any questions for Joe from the board? All right, uh Mr. Tarazo, we will take this under consideration, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. All right, let's go forward to calendar number seventy-one dash twenty-one dash S. I believe this is going to be marked again, but I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a liquor store, packaged good liquor license in an existing one-story commercial building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, bottles and cans too, LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, prepared by Woodhouse Tenucci Architects.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm the attorney for the applicant, bottles and cans for the property fifty-three sixty-six dash seventy West Divine Avenue. And as you said, the application for a special use for a liquor store with packaged goods liquor license. I have here with me today on the call, my associate Agnes Plekka. Also, on behalf of the applicant, I have, I believe, both Joe Katz and Carly Katz. We'll probably have only one of them testifying. And we have project architect Andy Tenucci and Joe Ryan, again, is our expert witness. So with that, my first witness would be Carly. Carly, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Good, all right, we got both Carly and Joe, very good. And Carly, as we decided, we'll we'll start with you to testify, is that okay?
Yep.
Would you state your name and your address?
Uh Carly Katz, uh fifty-eight fifty-five North Kenton.
Good. Mr. Chairman?
Yep, thank you, uh Ms. Katz, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Carly, is it true that you are a member, manager of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
And that your LLC has an agreement to rent space and first-floor space in the existing one-story building on the subject property?
Yes.
And we're here today for a special use for a liquor store with a packaged goods license, is that correct?
Correct.
And Carly, would you tell the board what type of liquor store you plan to operate there?
Um we are a high-end craft beer, craft wine, and um small-batch spirit store. Operating essentially unlike um your normal corner store liquor store, we are a little higher end.
Good. And Carly, would you tell the board what your experience is working in the liquor store business?
Um yes, we have a first location that we opened in two thousand and twelve, uh so this would actually be our um our second location. Um I've been managing and operating that space uh that entire time. I have five employees and one full-time manager.
Good. And Carly, what's the address of that other store?
Uh forty-one oh-nine North Lincoln Avenue.
Good. And Carly, would you briefly tell the board why you uh picked this location to open up the new store?
Um well, um aside from also being quite close to where we live, um we just felt like Edgebrook was the next wonderful little neighborhood. Um we want to help kind of grow and create. Uh we are kind of a boutiquey-style business model, um as well are many of the businesses that are also around there, um and we thought we would just be a good fit.
Good. And Carly, is this space currently vacant?
Correct, yes.
And were you advised that it's been vacant for some time?
Yes.
Carly, in order to file this application, uh did you need a zoning change from the city council?
We did.
And prior to that, did the Alderman have two large community meetings for this project?
Yes.
And did he also do an online survey to allow residents to try and enter this project?
Yes.
And in addition to that, did you also contact the Edgebrook Saw and Ash Chamber of Commerce and get their letter of support?
Yes.
And letter of support from the Edgebrook Community Association?
Yes.
And a letter from the Everyday Edgebrook Organization?
Yes.
And also a letter from the Dakota Restaurant down the street on Divine?
Yes.
So after that extensive community process, the city council did change the zoning, which allowed you to file this application?
Uh, yes.
Good. And Carly, in your opinion, uh would a uh special use for a liquor store at this location be compatible with the character of the surrounding area?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Good. And Carly, would you tell the board what uh what days of the week and what hours of operation you propose to be open?
So we're open seven days a week, um Monday through Saturday, we are open eleven to nine, and Sundays we're open eleven to seven.
Good. And Carly, did you sign an affidavit in connection with the uh testimony here today?
Yes, sir.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Good. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Carly.
Yeah, great, Mark, you two should go in, and we'll do uh questions of everyone at the end.
Good. And as long as I have Joe here, just two questions. Joe, would you state your name and address?
Sure, Joe Katz, five-eight-five-five North Kenton Avenue.
And Joe, you are also a a member of the LLC?
Correct.
And you will be involved in the business?
Correct.
And did you also sign an affidavit in connection with the case today?
Yes, sir.
And if I were to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you, that's all I have of Joe. Uh next, I uh our architect, Andy Tenucci. Andy, are you there?
Here.
Hey, Andy, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I sure will. Andy Tenucci, Principal at Woodhouse Tenucci Architects. Our address is two thirty West Superior, sixth floor, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five four.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Andy, and you are the project architect?
I am.
And Andy, is it fair to say that any work done in connection with this business would be interior work only?
Yes.
Good. So, Andy, and this is an existing uh one-story commercial building, is that correct?
It is.
And Andy, in your opinion, would the special use for a liquor store at this location in the existing building be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design?
It would.
And again, this is a one-story building at grade, is that correct?
Yes.
So is that building designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
And Andy, did you sign an affidavit in connection with the case today?
I did.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Uh that's all I have of Andy.
Great.
Joe Ryan?
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, did you? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't say anything. We've we've sworn Joe in.
All right, good.
Yep.
Joe, did you prepare a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
Okay. Uh so, Joe, you're familiar with the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes.
And also familiar with the proposed use?
I am.
In your opinion, would this proposed use be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, yes, it would.
Joe, in your opinion, also true that a special use for a liquor store at this location would not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
No, I cited uh several other liquor stores, packaged goods stores in the uh North Side community, and none of those had any adverse impact on um the surrounding community.
Good. And Joe, if I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with the materials in your report?
They would, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to rest on Joe's report at this point, then.
Yep, that's perfect. Okay, good. Um any questions from the board? Sounds like no questions, so we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Katz.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good weekend.
You too.
You too.
Right, now moving to seventy-two dash twenty-one dash Z, um at twenty-eight forty-seven to twenty-eight forty-nine West Palmer Street. Um counselor, when you're on, let me know.
Amy Kurson here.
Great, hi, Amy.
Hi there. Amy Kurson from the Law Offices of Ray's Kurson. Uh with me this afternoon, I have uh Ms. Nor, the owner of the property. Her urban planner, Tom Smith, who's very well-known to the zoning board of appeals, and also her architect, Peter Mark Nicholas. I've asked each of them to raise their hands.
Great. Yeah, let's make sure they do that.
Chairman, let me know when you're ready for me to proceed.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm ready. Uh if your if your witnesses are on, go right ahead.
I believe they're on. Thank you very much. Um Ms. Nor has applied for a variation to reduce the off-street parking requirement for her property. She's owned the property for thirty-seven years. This is a building that's more than fifty years old in an RT four district. It currently has six units. Ms. Nor would like to activate the garden units, which are obviously already there, uh so that she can um get more income in the property. Behind the building is a very lovely uh garden space that Ms. Nor has cultivated for a number of years, and she also has a parking garage that's in good shape, notwithstanding having been constructed in the nineteen twenties. With that, I'd like to ask of Ms. Nor to um join the, to join the um party here on the Zoom. Uh Ms. Nor, are you there?
I'm here.
Very good. Could you just state your uh your business address for the for the purposes of this um hearing?
The address is twenty-eight forty-seven and twenty-eight forty-nine West Palmer Street in Chicago.
Beautiful. And right now, we're looking at what appears to be a rear view of your property. This is, this is uh the garden that you've cultivated.
Real, real quick, counselor, I'm going to get Ms. Nor sworn in.
Oh, yes, of course.
Ms. Nor, so we have your name and address on the record. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you very much.
Ms. Nor, will you just tell the board why you're seeking to add two additional units at this historic property?
This um property, as you've seen, I've owned for thirty-seven years. And uh the during that time, prices have increased substantially. And the property taxes have increased by eighty percent. And uh recently, the city ended the garbage services that I was given um that I was paying for as part of city services, and city water has has increased substantially. And all of these increased costs have produced quite a hardship. And I've got had had tenants there for many, many years, so I tried to not raise their rent um as rapidly as my cost it has increased. So these and by allowing a rental of the basement units of the garden apartments, it would substantially uh uh change my balance sheet or my profit and loss statement.
Sure, that'll so you'll alleviate a current hardship if you're able to add the units, right?
Yes.
And if you were to provide additional parking in the rear of the property as required by the zoning ordinance, and this is the variation that we're seeking, you would have to either tear out the parking garage or tear out that lovely landscaping in the backyard, is that right?
Yes.
And both of those, go ahead.
The demolition of the five-car garage and the demolition of the very mature landscaping that I have, as well as the mitigation for stormwater drainage would be significant, as much as a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for me.
And Ms. Nor, we submitted an affidavit on your behalf. Do you affirm the contents of that affidavit today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Now I'll ask for um Ms. Nor's urban planner, Mr. Tom Smith, to join the call. Uh, Tom, will you just remind the zoning board of appeals for everybody who's new, uh your relationship to the board, your long history as an urban planner?
Okay, I I worked for the city in on zoning cases for sixteen years. I worked uh in the planning department primarily, but the last two years I worked as the acting zoning administrator for Chicago. Um, this was uh in between two thousand and four and two thousand and six, I was the acting zoning administrator.
Fantastic. And could you please state your business address for the record?
It's uh three-six-four-five North Mozart, Chicago, Illinois.
And Tom, this is I, it sounds like you may have gone unmute. If this is your first testimony before the board today, will you let the chairman know that?
Uh yes, this is my first testimony.
Yeah, great. And uh Mr. Smith, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Wonderful.
And uh Tom, do you affirm both the uh contents of the affidavit and the contents of your report today?
Uh yes, I do.
I just have three short questions for you. Is the proposed variation consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, it is. It uh the proposed, if the board grants the variation, this will promote uh transit use and transit-oriented development. It'll encourage the uh continued use of a ninety-seven-year-old building. It'll promote environmentally responsible development by allowing the applicant to save an existing garden. And then allow more housing in a neighborhood that needs more housing. It needs more rental housing.
Would the proposed variation alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
No, this is, this is an old neighborhood in Chicago. Most of the buildings uh on the block were built before parking requirements uh under the Chicago zoning code, so people don't move here for the parking.
With the uh with the reduction in the parking requirement from uh adding two units without parking spaces, will that increase congestion in the area?
No, I, in my opinion, it will not. Uh people are attracted to this neighborhood because of the great uh transit access. This building is a two-minute walk to the CTA's uh Blue Line Station at California. Uh within two to three blocks of here, you've got the bus line down Milwaukee Avenue. You've got the California bus, and you got the Fullerton bus. This is also a neighborhood with lots of restaurants, lots of retail, lots of places to go that you don't need a car. This is also a neighborhood with lots of restaurants, lots of retail, lots of places to go that you don't need a car or even public transit.
In your opinion, will the variation harm the values of surrounding properties?
Not at all. I think most people won't realize that there's been a change. Property values in the neighborhood continue to rise. There's lots of studies that document that. The Institute for Housing at DePaul has documented the tremendous increase in property values in Logan Square. It's really one of the most popular neighborhoods in Chicago for young people outside of downtown, outside of the central business district.
Very good. Thank you for your time. I'm asking the architect.
I do want to say one other thing, though.
Yes, of course.
I'm sorry. In my study that I submitted, or my report that I submitted, I identified seven cases where the board allowed the exact same variance under the exact same circumstances. It was a change from a six-unit building to an eight-unit building. And this board, in the last four or five years, has granted seven of those cases for the conversion of a six-unit building to an eight-unit building. That's it.
Thanks for your note.
Counselor, we appreciate that history on our voting, but as you know, we are not precedent-setting as a board and really don't weigh much into that.
Thanks, Tom. And now I'd like to call our architect, Peter Mark Nicholas. Peter Mark, we've submitted an affidavit on your behalf. Do you affirm the contents of that affidavit this afternoon? I'm not hearing Peter Mark on the phone.
You might be. Mr. Nicholas, you might be muted. It looks like you just went off of you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I did sign the affidavit.
Very good. I have only one question for you today, and that is, apart from the requested variation.
Counselor, let's get him sworn in, please.
Oh, of course, I'm sorry. I'm so eager to run through your case quickly.
No worries. Mr. Nicholas, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Peter M. Nicholas. My business address is five zero nine North Walcott Avenue, Chicago six oh six two-two. Name of my business is Nicholas Design Collaborative.
Perfect. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have only one question for you, sir. Apart from the requested variation, will the property comply with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, it will.
Very good. In closing, Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to remind you that Alderman LaSpada has submitted a letter in support of the variation, and we're available to answer any additional questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. I might have a few, but first, any questions for members of the board?
Just a general question, Commissioner Sanchez. Could you talk more about exactly what the hardship is here?
I believe that Ms. Nor, and I can ask her to jump in here, has two kinds of hardships. The first is that if she is not granted the variation, she won't be able to have the income that she really needs to keep rents low and to keep up the maintenance of the building. Is that correct, Ms. Nor?
That's correct.
And if you were going to establish the units and comply with the zoning ordinance, you would need to rip out an existing five-car garage on the back of the property and rip out mature trees and a garden that are behind the property. Is that correct?
That's correct, and drainage would have to be accommodated, as well as a new blacktop, new pavement.
And the cost of that demolition and those changes, you've testified, would be at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, as far as you know.
That's without the drainage and stormwater and without the asphalt.
Thank you.
And on that note, so we get the full picture, Ms. Nor, how much do you anticipate in charging in rent for the two added units?
Well, first, I want to be approved, but the look to see what the going rate is, but probably about a thousand to one unit is smaller than the other, and so the smaller unit would probably be a thousand and the larger unit would probably be about fifteen hundred. Again, since they're not legalized yet, I haven't gone through the full analysis of what I could charge.
Okay, then we'll take, you know, we'll take an estimate. We do look at economic analysis on these cases, full circle. So what you intend to make and what the cost would be of not being able to get your variation. So, any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just allow me to ask Ms. Nor one additional question. Ms. Nor, is your reason for seeking the variation today motivated solely by a desire to get more money out of the property? Or are you also motivated by trying to maintain a beautiful property, including landscaping and good conditions and rents that are as fair as you can charge for your tenants?
Well, I think it's about fifty-fifty for me. I've had these tenants for quite some time, and it's a nice community feeling. Their children have grown up in this building, and so we have a really nice community. So, part of that community is that we all meet in the backyard and have picnics and that sort of thing. And of course, if the backyard is a parking lot, that would no longer be available, and the rear would not be a playfield for playground for the kids anymore. They really enjoy the backyard. But in answer to your question, Amy, I certainly need the income to be able to to keep my rents affordable for the tenants that have been there for so long. But I also, since I live there also, the aesthetic aspect is very important to me. In the summer, we spend quite a bit of time in the backyard.
Great, thank you, Ms. Nor.
I have another question.
Go right ahead, Brian.
All right, thanks. This is Commissioner Sanchez here. Ms. Nor, how long have you owned the property?
Thirty-seven years.
And have the garden units, what, have they just been vacant this entire time that you've owned the property, or?
When I purchased the property, the garden units were there, and the garden units were not in very good shape. And I didn't have the money to put into any improvements. So, the garden units were not used at all for many years. And you probably saw in some of the pictures there, there are three buildings that are the exact same footprint as this building, twenty-eight forty-seven, twenty-eight forty-nine West Palmer. All of them had basement units as well. And so, when I did get the money to make improvements, I made improvements on the basement units. And there is a record issue in the city of Chicago. Some of the Harris files shows that it's an eight-unit building, and other records show that it's a six-unit building. So, we're just going through the process of legalizing this. And Tom Smith might be able to address that more because he is aware of the conflict in the city's records.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's right. The planning department's record, they created something called the Harris file, and it indicates that it's an eight-unit building. But water records, I think, show it as six, so it's confusing. The zoning code says that if you stop using units for an eighteen-month period, they're no longer considered non-conforming. And so, Ms. Nor is here because of that, in my opinion. And to me, the eighteen months is an arbitrary rule. And most people with buildings that are ninety-seven years old, they have no idea over that ninety-seven-year period whether those units were unoccupied for some time or for the eighteen-month period or not. So, I think she's doing the right thing. She's coming to the board. She's asking for your approval. Parking issue is not really a big issue on this block. There's lots of buildings without parking here.
Great, yep, thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions from the board?
I have one more question. Ms. Nor, how did you find out that the garden units were not in compliance with the zoning ordinance?
Well, in part, as I said, there are three six-flats that are all the same, built by the same builder back in nineteen twenty-four. And one of the buildings, just like mine, went to condos. And during that time, they had a five-car garage, just like mine. And they destroyed the five-car garage. It was in bad shape, but it was such an amenity. And so, I asked them at that point, why did you put asphalt in this beautiful backyard? And they said, well, it was because we had to tear down the garage. We have no backyard now, and it was, excuse me, it was to be in performance with the zoning board.
Don't, you can't accuse us of being tree killers. But I understand the nature of the point. Okay, any other questions from the board?
No, thank you, Ms. Nor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else?
It sounds like no more questions. Ms. Nor, so thank you very much for your time, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calendar number seventy-three dash twenty-one dash S. And that's at twenty-one twenty-four North Damon. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation, as Tyler is getting set. Okay. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a liquor store, wine store, on the first floor of an existing two-story building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Door Twenty-four Wine LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by Jackson Harlar Architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Tyler Manick of Shane Banks, Kenny and Schwartz, at Seventy West Madison Suite, five-three-hundred in Chicago, Illinois. I'm joined by Michelle Fitzpatrick and Kevin Kenny, representatives of the applicant, Door Twenty-four Wine LLC, and Mike Woolen, their MIA appraiser. The applicant seeks a special use permit to open and operate a high-end retail wine store in an existing ground-floor commercial space at twenty-one twenty-four North Damon. The property is improved with an existing two-story mixed-use building with approximately one thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and basement storage. The applicant seeks to activate the currently vacant ground-floor commercial space with a high-end retail wine store, which is not currently provided anywhere in the immediate area and which will produce valuable taxes to the city of Chicago. The prior use at the subject ground floor was an art gallery that has had to close. The current vacancy disrupts a steady trend of ground-floor commercial development in the area. And the community is in high demand for a quality ground-floor commercial development at this property. And this use will be complementary and create synergy with the other businesses on Damon to collectively benefit from this store's operation. The applicant proposes hours of operation from twelve PM to nine PM on Monday through Saturday, and twelve PM to six PM on Sunday. The applicant will implement security cameras and alarm system, secure alarm system for security, and the existing exterior of the building, of the one hundred and thirty-year-old building, will remain unchanged. Since filing this application, the applicant has done a significant community outreach, met with the Bucktown Record Park Chamber of Commerce, who issued a letter of support, met with the Alderman, who also issued a letter of support, and the applicant went door-to-door to meet with numerous local business owners. And we submitted about fifteen letters of support from the local businesses. To date, we haven't received any objections to this use. With that, Chairman, I would like to move to the witnesses. If you, I would call Michelle Fitzpatrick first, if you want to swear her in.
Yep, great. Ms. Fitzpatrick, if you can speak, please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Fitzpatrick, twenty-one twenty-four North Damon Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, what's your relationship to the applicant?
I'm the manager, owner.
And how many owners are there of the business?
There are two of us.
And what's the ownership's experience relevant to operating a wine store at this location?
I have been an independent business owner since nineteen ninety-seven. I owned a retail shop in Bucktown for five years, from two thousand three to two thousand eight. The managing partner, Kevin Kenny, has had seventeen years' experience in the wine industry.
Thank you. Did you sign an affidavit that was submitted with your findings of fact?
Yes.
And the statements that you made in the affidavit, are they true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the testimony you provided in that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, unless there's any further questions, I've moved to Mr. Woolen.
Yep, let's go to Mr. Woolen, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you. Mr. Woolen, are you available?
I am.
Do you want to swear him in, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Woolen, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mike Woolen, Five Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Woolen, what is your profession?
I'm an MIA appraiser, Illinois State Certified Appraiser. I've appeared before this board and numerous other tribunals many times, and qualified as an expert witness.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do you recognize Mr. Woolen as an expert?
Yeah, we do, based off of the report as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Woolen, were you engaged by the applicant?
I was engaged by the applicant.
And you were engaged to evaluate whether or not the proposed business meets the special use criteria in the Chicago zoning ordinance, correct?
That is true.
And to determine that, you prepared a report, correct?
That's true.
And that report was submitted with the applicant's findings, proposed findings of fact?
As well as my affidavit, yes.
And do you adopt as your test, and are the statements that you made in that report true and correct?
As my knowledge, they are, each of them.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements and findings you made in that report?
I do.
And did you sign an affidavit that was submitted with the applicant's findings of fact?
I did.
And are the statements that you made in that affidavit true and correct?
They are.
And do you adopt the statements that you made in your affidavit as your testimony here today?
I do.
And in your opinion, does the proposed business meet the special use criteria in Chicago's zoning ordinance?
I believe they do.
Thank you, Mr. Woolen. And, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for the witnesses. If you'd like to ask any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any additional questions from the board?
I've got one question. Ms. Fitzpatrick, with regard to your business partner who has experience in the wine industry, could you tell us a little bit more about that experience? Is it in retail, or?
It's a combination, yeah, it's a combination of wholesale and retail. It's a combination of wholesale and retail.
Okay. And that was for the last, what was that, 18 years?
17 years.
17? Okay. Thank you.
And just for a little background, so we can get the nature of the street. Is there any competition super nearby? We don't weigh competition. I don't want to bring that into it. I'm just wondering where exactly you're moving into.
There is no competition within a mile of us.
In fact, on page 13 of my report, I identify the nearest wine stores and their hours of operation on each of the stores.
Yep, great. Thank you, Mr. Woolen. Okay, any additional questions from the board? Okay, well, Ms. Fitzpatrick, we'll take this under consideration, and thanks for your time coming in front of us today.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, calendar numbers 74-21-Z and 75-21-Z, which is at 3015 and 3017 North Southport.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I begin?
Go right ahead.
For the record again, my name is Tyler Manick of Shane Banks, Kenny and Schwartz at 70 West Madison Suite 5300, Chicago, Illinois. I'm joined by Jack Duncan, the applicant's representative, and Mark Clumper, the applicant's licensed architect. The applicant, 3015 North Southport LLC, purchased the subject property, which was last used as a surface parking lot with zero-foot front side, front and side setbacks. The subject lot is a substandard lot measuring only 105 feet in depth. The property is adjacent, and the zoning is tied to an existing building at 3001 North Southport, which has significant historical characteristics to the community. In order to preserve the existing historical building and adaptively reuse it, any development of this subject property must preserve six parking spaces for the uses that will be at the existing adjacent building. Furthermore, the adjacent property next door to the south of this property at 3021 North Southport was spot-zoned in 2006 from a B zoning district to an R zoning district. It is the only property that has an R zoning district designation on the block. As a result of this spot zoning, the subject property is subject to setback standards of an R zoning district instead of the customary setback requirements of the B zoning district in which it is located. Due to the spot zone at 3021 North Southport, this property is subject to unique setback requirements not characteristic of other B-zone properties. Whereas the other B-zone properties on the block built before this R-zone property have zero side and rear setbacks, while the adjacent existing historical building also has a zero-front setback, where the applicant seeks its front setback relief. In order to provide the required 13 parking spaces on the ground floor of the property and accommodate the existing historical building, the applicant must reduce the rear setback from 30 feet to 15 and 1/3 feet due to the substandard depth of the lot, reduce the southern half of the front setback from 6 feet to 0 feet to allow for a spark parking space off the alley, which is equidistant to the zero-front setback in the adjacent historical building, and leaving the northern half of the front setback at 4 feet. Reduce the north-side setback from 4 feet to 0 feet. However, this setback relief only pertains to the rear 28 feet of the first floor, which accommodates the internal parking of the building and allows for a small side stair, internal staircase necessary for ingress and egress to the dwelling. And the applicant seeking to increase the height of the zoning district by 4 inches to 50 feet, 4 inches, in order to accommodate the extra height needed on the first floor for the external parking. The applicant requires these variations in order to preserve and revitalize the historical building at 3001 North Southport and accommodate the spot zoning at 3021 North Southport as well as the substandard depth of this lot. Prior to filing this application, the applicant did go through a rigorous community process. The applicant met with the alderman, the South Lake New neighbors, and the adjacent neighbor at 3021 North Southport, who all expressed approval and no issues with the applicant's efforts to revitalize the long dormant historical building at 3001 North Southport and improve this vacant lot. With that, Chairman, I would like to move on to the witnesses.
Yep, perfect. Let's get them sworn in.
Jack Duncan, are you there?
I'm here.
Great. And Jack, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Jack Duncan, 130 East Randolph, Suite 2100.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I sure do.
Mr. Duncan, can you please describe your relationship to the applicant?
Yes, I am the portfolio manager and owner representative for the entire portfolio that we have about 45 buildings in the Lakeview-Lincoln Park neighborhood. First one dating back to 1984. We've never sold anything, so it's always been a long-term hold approach for us.
And your office will be at the historical building at 3001 North Southport, correct?
Correct. I'll be taking 4,000 square feet on the first floor there.
And in connection with our findings of fact, you signed an affidavit, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the testimony that you provided in your affidavit is true and correct, correct?
Yes, sir.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the testimony that you provided in that affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions for Mr. Duncan right now, I'd go to Mr. Clumper for the next witness.
Yep, thanks, Tyler. Let's go to Mr. Clumper, and then we'll take any questions at the end. So, yeah, so, Mr. Clumper, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Mark Clumper, offices at 600 West Jackson Mullabard, Suite 250, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Clumper, what is your profession?
I'm an architect.
And you're licensed with the state of Illinois, correct?
Correct.
And you prepared the plans that are subject to this application?
Yes, I did.
And in connection with the findings of fact, you prepared, or you signed an affidavit that was submitted with the findings of fact?
Yes.
And is the testimony you provided in that affidavit true and correct?
Yes, it is.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the testimony you provided in that affidavit?
Yes, it's consistent with that affidavit.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this project.
Great. Yeah, any questions from the board on this one? Tyler, I know it's in your finding of fact, but could you give us those little summary on the economic analysis?
I would turn it over to Mr. Duncan, who has that firsthand knowledge.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Mr. Duncan, if you could give us a bit of an economic analysis on, you know, what the project looks like, also what the project looks like without the variation?
Yeah, it's simply just not feasible without the variation on top of the zoning that was put in place for the 3001 due to the parking spaces, parking requirements for the 3001 building with the variance is why we came for the 3017.
Okay, so with, do I write that with the variation, the rate of return looks like 5.8%, I think is what was in the finding of fact?
Correct.
So without, it would become unfeasible. Okay. Okay, great. Additional questions from the board? Okay, we're going to take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Have a good weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, calendar number 76-21-Z at 3132 North Spalding Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully I have Mr. Luke Blotnick and John Pindella with us.
Yes, I'm here.
Would you please swear the witness is in, Mr. Chairman?
Please do. Yep, Mr. Blonik, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Lucas Blonik, 2050 North Kedzie, Chicago, Illinois. Sorry about the Hawaiian or San Franciscan background.
Yeah, I can't even see it, but now I'd like to. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes.
And, Mr. Pimentel, will you please state your name and address for the record?
John Pimentel, 965 West Chicago, Illinois, 60642.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding? Great, take it away, Counselor.
Thank you. Mr. Blotnick, you are the owner of a double lot that has a two-flat on it, is that right?
Correct.
And while there are two separate pins, two separate lots of record, you've learned through this process that the city, the zoning department, considers it one zoning lot, is that right?
Correct.
And because there are two units on one zoning lot, and it was an R3, that what appears to be a vacant lot next to it is not a buildable lot unless or until the lot with the building becomes conforming, is that right?
Correct.
So you went through a process with the alderman, and you were able to get the lot upzoned from an R3 to an R3.5 just for the purpose of allowing you to bring it into conformance, because a two-flat needs a 3.5. You could not have a two-flat on the RF3 alone, is that right?
Correct.
And after you've finished that process, we now are in front of the board, because this building is a very old building, built before the zoning laws, so its setbacks are not conforming to the current law, is that right?
Correct.
And so the idea is to bring it into conformance on its single lot, and then, and only then, at that point, the lot next door becomes a buildable lot, is that right?
Correct.
And so the setbacks that are on the existing building have been there for 80 or 100 or more years. And the idea is, by granting these variances, this building will be able to be conforming on its own single lot, is that right?
Correct.
And you've been working with the architect, who we'll hear from in a minute, to bring this into conformance. And if you are able to do that, you will, your intention would be to sell the lot next door, which would help you pay down your mortgage, but you will not be the developer of it, is that right?
Correct.
And you and I went through an affidavit where, witness statement, where you went through each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant this variance. And if you were able to, if you continue to testify, you testified consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
Correct.
Can I ask John some questions now?
Yep, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. John, you're a licensed architect with the firm of PMP, is that right?
That's right.
And Mr. Blotnick asked you to help him understand what he had to do to bring this property into conformance so that a single-family home would be eligible to have a single-family home built on what appears to be a vacant lot, but was part of this zoning lot next door, is that right?
Correct.
So you did a study of the neighborhood, and we have pictures of all the houses on the block, and you did a block survey with all the setbacks. And the result of that, although it's a mixed block with some bigger buildings and some 12-flats and different things, then that result is the setbacks here, if the variances are granted, will fit right into the character of the rest of the block, is that fair to say?
Correct.
And when, if these variances are granted, this building, the existing building, which is the focus here, will then be fully compliant with all ordinances and all of the rules of the city of Chicago, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I went through an affidavit where you went through all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
Correct.
That's our case in essence, and both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board? Somewhat similar to a matter we heard earlier today.
This is a thing that happens all the time. People think there's a vacant lot, and it's not, because the difference, a zoning lot is not a, it's about use and not just pin numbers or lots of records.
Yep, yep. No, I understand. No questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thanks for coming, and thanks for your time.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Moore, we have, we have a string of three matters that I know are yours. So I'm going to call 77-21-Z, 78-21-Z, and 79-21-Z. And then we're going to be taking a short break.
So hopefully, we have Mr. John Baldwin and his wife Sharon. And we also have their architect, John Kelly.
The two of us are here.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, would you please swear? Both John and Sharon are both on one screen there.
Perfect. I've been both sworn in. Mrs. Baldwin, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sharon Baldwin. 1064 West Polk Street, Chicago, 60607.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And, Mr. Baldwin, will you please state your name and address on the record as well?
John Baldwin, 1064 West Polk Street.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And do you want to get John Kelly now too, or wait?
Oh, we can get, yeah, we can get Mr. Kelly on as well. Mr. Kelly, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is John Kelly, 5215 North Ravenswood, Chicago, Illinois.
Great. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings as well?
I do.
Perfect.
Okay, so if I can start with John. John, you've been for many years a professor at UIC, is that right?
That's correct.
And you live in the neighborhood where you could walk to work there. And you lived there with your wife, and you were vitally involved in the neighborhood all of these years, is that right?
Yes.
And you live in an older house with a very small, very short and thin lot. And you could now, your wife has a serious illness, a progressive illness, and you could move to some assisted living place, but you'd like to stay in the neighborhood as long as you can, is that right?
That is so.
And we have, you procured from your doctor a letter that we have in our hearing exhibits explaining that Sharon has CLPD and has trouble breathing, but as the years go on, she's going to have more trouble, is that right?
That is correct.
And you observe her, and she now... And you observe her and she now, at this point, has difficulty. It takes her a long time, a couple stairs at a time, to get up outside the stairs, is that right?
That's right.
So what you're hoping to do is if the board grants it as an accommodation and a variance, you're hoping to build a an elevator in the backyard, but it's a little bit of a side yard, so that Sharon can get from the ground floor up to the second floor where your bedrooms are and be able to live as normal life as possible, is that right?
Well, yes, and and actually, there's other stops so that it would get down to the basement for for laundry and where her office used to be, but she doesn't go down there very much anymore because of the difficulty of the stairs.
And the reason she doesn't go down there anymore is is because of the difficulty.
Yeah, yes.
And similarly, she has you carrying stuff to upstairs and and she only goes upstairs once a day because to go to bed because same thing because of the difficulty.
Yeah, that sort of thing.
Okay. And so that's our one request is is for the variances that would allow the elevator. But as long as you were doing that, Sharon also enjoys and your family enjoys, you have a longtime legal garage roof deck that you use in the in the good months, is that right?
That is correct.
And you actually, long before it was required in twenty seventeen by the law, you actually have a complying stair that goes up the parallel to the garage, just like the the code now requires. Is that right? You have a stair that hugs the wall, is that right?
That is correct.
But Sharon doesn't go up there anymore or very seldom because it is difficult to for her to get up it, is that right?
Yes.
So you're so that she could also enjoy the outdoors in the summer, you're asking the board to allow the variances necessary to have a bridge from the elevator over to the garage roof deck so that she could enjoy that outdoor space as well.
That's correct.
And all of this is motivated by wanting to stay in the neighborhood and 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 continue the life you've lived there as long as possible.
Yes.
And you are very friendly with all your neighbors and we have put in our hearing exhibits letters of support from your neighbors and you're aware of no one who's against this, is that right?
That is correct.
And you and I went through a a witness statement where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance and you're respectfully requesting that they do, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently with what you've put in your written statement, is that right?
Yes.
Sharon, would you address the board for a minute, please? We just give the board some idea of how difficult it is at this point in the progress of your condition to get up or downstairs.
Well, the problem with the stairs is just, I can't just walk from the living room up to the upstairs. I have to stop partway up the stairs. If I try to go all at once up the stairs, not even very fast, I end up dizzy at the top because I'm out of I'm out of air.
And has that been getting has that been getting better or worse?
It's getting worse.
And does your doctor tell you that you have that this is a progressive condition?
Yes, yes, he has told me that.
And I know it is your hope that you won't need a a walker or a wheelchair anytime soon. But even in your current condition, you are you able to carry anything when you go up, when you do go upstairs?
Not not anything that weighs anything. I mean, like, that's why, John, when I do the laundry, he has to carry all the laundry baskets down to the basement for me. And I do the laundry and then after I work my way upstairs, he ends up having to go down to the basement and carry all the all the laundry baskets. And when I go shopping, you know, I can go shopping, but then when I come back, he has to carry all the food out of the out of the car and into the house up the stairs in the back.
If you had an elevator, it would alleviate most of those issues, is that right?
Oh, absolutely, because it's it's not so bad as long as I'm level, but there's something about how much oxygen you need, which is not that much when you're walking on a level. But the minute you're going up a ramp or going upstairs or anything else where you're actually you know that you increase your oxygen use when you have to pull yourself or anything up. And that just goes beyond my level. I mean, I'm just don't have any spare oxygen.
Okay. And if you if you and and tell the board then why so so the elevator will help you get from the basement to the first floor and from the first floor to the second floor, tell the board why you would also like them to accommodate you with a bridge to get to the
Well, the deck on the garage is the best part of our our backyard. I mean, it's the part that's up in the sun. It's very nice. It's where we have people over. You know, sitting down in the shade, down in the ground, because the the houses on each side of this kind of shade our backyard. It's just by far the best outdoor place. And so it's really hard for me to go up there. You know, I can't, if it's only going to be for half an hour, like, my husband will go out and have a coffee and read a newspaper sitting in the sun up on the deck, and I just can't do that. If I'm going up to the deck, it has to be something where I plan a long period of time to make it worth you know, stopping two or three times at least on the way up and being really tired when I get to the top. So I really want that deck to be able to use that deck and the elevator plus plus the bridge would let me do that.
Okay. And if you ever did have to have a wheelchair or a walker or carry oxygen, you wouldn't be able to get up there at all without the bridge, is that right?
Well, that would be true, yes.
Okay. And you and I also basically did a witness statement similar to John's where you addressed the the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variance you need to have your elevator and your your bridge. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with what your witness statement said, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And John Kelly, you're a licensed architect, are you?
That's correct, yes.
And you took, first of all, this is a non-conforming lot. Will you tell the board how big it is?
The lot is one hundred feet deep by twenty five foot wide.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was only twenty four wide. But anyway, so it's twenty five feet short of a of a standard lot. And so that in terms of trying to build this elevator and this bridge without variances, that would creates difficulties that you had to overcome and could only deal with a variance, is that right?
That's correct.
I mean, for instance, there is no room to put a ramp that that could ramp its way up to the garage roof deck, could it?
Oh, no, it would be it would take up the whole backyard and more.
And and that wouldn't solve the problem from from floor to floor.
It also wouldn't solve the problem. I think it would almost be as hard for her to put up a ramp as walking stairs. So it doesn't really address the the problem for her.
Okay. And you and I went, but if these variances are granted, this property will be in full compliance with all the ordinances and codes of the city, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I went through a witness statement where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. All of these people are available for questions.
Great. Yep, thank you, everyone. Tom, so I think it would be helpful for us viewing this since there are several variation requests for us to talk about which relates to the elevator addition and which relates to the bridge. How I'm seeing it is seventy seven and seventy nine for sure relate for sure relate to the elevator elevator addition. Is that a is that correct?
The John Kelly and I talked about this and and we're not sure. The he he put in the plans, these were the the denials that came back. I'm required to peric the denial. John Kelly, can you light set any light on that?
Well, the the setback requirement that we that we would really need for the the bridge, I think it was one point eight feet. And so they they had requested a zero setback, although we don't particularly need a zero, we need a one point eight feet. And that would be on the east side. In the backyard, they said zero and we we would really need a setback there of twenty three point two feet. So and we we don't need those those levels of setback requirements, but we do need, you know, setbacks to comply.
But but the chairman's question really is, can you separate these that that one of the one of these variances relates to the the bridge and the other one or two relate to the the elevator? And you and I talked about that.
Yeah, could you could you state the variances, please?
Sure, do you want me to?
Yes, please, thank you. I don't I don't have it in front of me, fortunately.
Okay. Seventy seven is a variation to expand an existing nineteen eighty one point six four square feet of F A R floor area that has existed for more than fifty years by one hundred and thirty eight square feet. Seventy eight is reducing the east side setback from the required two feet to zero. West side setback from two feet to zero for a combined setback reduction from five feet to zero. Rear setback from twenty eight feet to point point one feet. And the final variation, seventy nine, is a variation to relocate the required one hundred and sixty two point five square feet of rear rear yard open space to the deck patio.
So clearly, clearly, the first one, seventy seven, is nearly about the elevator because it it it's adding one hundred and thirty eight square feet, which is the size of the elevator to the F A R.
That's correct. And the and the second one, seventy eight, I I believe would comply to both of them. And then seventy nine, which is the the open space one, that would be a that would that would be for the bridge.
Okay. Seventy nine would be for the bridge, but not for the the addition?
Correct.
Okay, because I'm trying to separate in my mind, you know, hardships as they relate to the property. And you can expand on that, maybe Tom or someone else, but the I think we've we've touched on hardships related to the addition for the elevator. And I'm looking for some hardship as it relates to the property relating to the bridge.
Well, so, John, I I know you said it were so so there is a compliant stair right now to get to the roof deck, is that right?
Right. The stairs currently parallel to the back of the garage, which makes it compliant.
Right. But we have a short lot and there really is no way to have a A D A compliant accommodation to get a wheelchair or a some a person who is not able to walk up those stairs in this short lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything you can add? That's what I can think of.
In terms of the the in terms of the how far we are away from the co-complacency, it's like, I mean, we're talking like you know, minimal amount of square footage. So the you know, the in terms of the the spirit of the zoning regulations, I don't think us being granted this to allow Sharon and John to fully use their property would really would really be a hardship for anybody, any of the neighbors. It's not really doing anything that would impede their lighter air or anything. And it's it's so close to the the regulations as is now, it seems like it seems like it would fit into the spirit of the what the regulations are supposed to enforce.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, you know, and as you know, I've been doing this for a long time. I've never made this argument before, but and I'm not a disability lawyer, but I I have some exposure to it. And I don't know, John, your architects have to think about this. You know, I I know that businesses and universities, and I think cities have to make reasonable accommodations where they can and where it doesn't hurt anybody else. And I think this would be a situation where that might apply.
So a question I have on that, because I understand hardship as it relates to the home, like, an A D A compliant home. I've never heard of an A D A compliant roof deck. Maybe the architect can touch on that?
Well, they I I look at the roof deck as being, especially with the way Sharon and John use it, and and especially with Sharon's condition, that, you know, her her ability to have access to the outside and all the health benefits of sunshine and fresh air are really contingent a lot on that roof deck. And to deny her that is, I think, to deny her something that would, you know, be really required for her to have reasonable access to, you know, stay in her neighborhood in her house. So it's it seems to me like it's a an integral part of the the house in many ways.
And I I would add, I think that the more aggressive view of the A D A is that any place people can go, hopefully, we would like people who have a disability to be able to go as well. And we don't always mandate it because of the expense. But here, we're we're on their own property and all they need is the accommodation from the you know, from the government here to allow them to do it. And the, you know, where where it and this this board has the discretion in to make reasonable accommodations. It seems to me it's it's a a worthy thing to do.
Well, if I could make, could I could I make another point that I think is kind of relevant, and especially in the in the age of, you know, the COVID epidemic is the idea of being able to stay in your community, in your home, if nothing else for the safety of that, instead of going to assisted living or whatever, I think is I don't know, from my practice, I'm finding more and more people want to really make their home kind of even more their sanctuary. And to me, as long as they can do that and not impede or impin impinge on somebody else's, you know, freedoms or or whatever the the codes afford to them. I it seems to me the city should allow people to be able to stay in their community and especially as they age, as John and Sharon are.
I mean, I I understand the argument, that argument as it relates to to the elevator. I think if you've ever been in front of this board before, you you'll know that the these bridges are are not necessarily a given for enjoyment. It affects the permanent footprint of the city. Open space, air and light. I understand that a lot of people want these, but it's our job to kind of weigh I understand that a lot of people want these, but it's our job to kind of weigh all the considerations as to the particular hardship of the building of the property and also, you know, what we do to our city's footprint going forward.
But I I totally understand that. I I do feel that in this particular situation, it's not just enjoyment. I think it's a matter of health and well-being for Sharon as well, but I I do understand, because I've I've encountered the the bridge issue before. I I I do understand the city's position on this. I think there's somewhat extenuating circumstances in this case.
And so there, I mean, even with, you know, there will still be some outdoor space if there was to be no bridge. There are several feet there, correct?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's on the north side of the building. It's, it's it's definitely compromised exterior space, but yes, you're correct.
Okay. And again, I'm just getting, I'm just getting everything out there, because, you know, with these, we view we view a lot of different properties with different hardships related related to to these and you know, it's a city lot. Questions for the board as we're thinking out loud on this?
I would just mention, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, this, they do have a compliance stair. You know, but that, that's not going to work. And so in this case, which is different than the cases you're talking about, where someone wants it for convenience or or whatever, you've heard all the reasons. I I think this case is different.
Okay, yeah, no, no, and I understand, trust me, it it we, you know, Tom, we just got to get everything out here. I'm very sympathetic to the personal hardships, but we really can't approve anything unless we see hardships particular to the lot and building. So I'm just trying to get everything out there. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. As promised, I'm going to move to a short recess. It is now four thirty-three, so we will reconvene at four thirty, four forty-five PM. I'm motioning for recess. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul. Okay, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Great, I am a yes. That is the majority. We will reconvene at four forty-five PM. Thank you, everyone. All right, it is four forty-five PM, so I move that we reconvene this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
And calendar number eighty, that's twenty-one dash Z and eighty-two dash twenty-one dash Z at twenty-one twenty-nine West Bell Plain. Counselor Pekarski, let me know when you're present.
Hello?
Hey, John, yep, we can hear you.
Ah, great. Okay, anyway, good evening. Again, my name is John Pekarski, and this evening I represent Mr. and Mrs. David Nickel, who owned the property at twenty-one twenty-nine West Bell Plain. I have with me Mr. Nickel, David Nickel, are you there, David?
I am.
Good. And our architect, Mr. Todd Israel, are you there, Todd?
I know. In just few seconds.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, perfect. Counselor Saul, swear them in. Counselor, is it okay with you if I get them sworn in?
Okay. We're here.
Go ahead, John, I was going to swear them in, but I'll I'll let you.
Go ahead, that'd be fine with me.
Mr. Nickel, will you please state your name and address for the record?
David Nickel, twenty-one twenty-nine West Bell Plain, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one eight.
Thank you. And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. And Mr. Israel, will you please state your name and address for the record as well?
Yep, Todd Israel, ten eleven West East Lee, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four zero.
Great. And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you both. John, proceed.
We are here because of an unusual need caused by the existence of of the building itself. The building that we're talking about is the home of Mr. and Mrs. Nickel. But it has an unusually high basement. This is a real problem because it is include, because of its height, the floor area of the basement, which is not particularly utilitarian, must be included in the house. It it's an unusual situation, but we are here to help rectify it. We are seeking to include, to increase the floor area ratio by about four hundred and thirty-seven square feet to the, from the former twenty-nine hundred and fifteen square feet to thirty-three hundred and fifty-two square feet. This is the smallest house on the block. And we unfortunately can't do anything about it as far as the basement is concerned. We must include it in our floor area ratio. That is the the chief problem. The other three problems that we are seeking is a a front yard setback of fourteen point eleven feet instead of the required fourteen point seventy. of 14.11 feet instead of the required 14.78 feet, a west side yard of 0.62 feet instead of the required two feet, and a combined side yards of 3.86 feet instead of the required five feet. Now, the last three variations that we're seeking are simply caused by the fact that it's a very old building that is set on its lot. It's incapable of being moved. The building is decades old. It was purchased in 2013, I believe, for approximately $613,000. The estimated cost of repair or the remodeling is $350,000 plus thousand dollars. And according to the client, the house should be worth around $1 million, which is just a trade. They are not seeking to make any financial gain. This is the home for Mr. and Mrs. Nickel. With that, I would call as my first witness, David Nickel. David, please state your name, address.
David Nickel, 2129 West Bell Plain, Chicago, Illinois.
And you and your wife own the, the building?
Yes.
And you purchased it in 2013, is that correct?
Yes.
And at that time, it was sufficient for your needs, is that correct?
Yes.
That was 30-plus years ago. Your needs have changed.
Right, yes, they have changed.
And you would like to continue to live in the house that you own, is that correct?
Yes.
And in order to do that, you would like to increase the height a bit and go out at the back a bit as far as this building is concerned, is that correct?
Yes.
And you estimate that that is going to cost you at least $350,000 exclusive of soft costs, et cetera, is that true?
Yes.
The, have you inquired of your neighbors whether or not they approve of your proposal?
Yeah, both neighbors, the neighbor immediately to the west and to the east are both supportive and have written a letter to support the project.
Right, and we have furnished to the board copies of the letters from both adjacent neighbors. The neighborhood in which you're located, would this proposed use in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
No.
And do you feel that you will in any way injure property values as a result of what you're doing?
No.
In fact, the opposite is true, I would assume.
Yes.
Adding to a, a, a home that, adding value to a home adds value to the entire neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, I have prepared on your behalf, and I, you have signed an affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that are in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
I have no further questions of David.
Great, thank you, John. And do you want to get on Mr. Israel as well, and then we'll turn to question?
I would call Todd with, Todd Israel, please state your name, address, and occupation.
Yep, Todd Israel, 1011 West Kingsley, Chicago, Illinois 6064, 60640. And I'm the architect for this project.
Now, can you briefly explain the project to the board?
Yep, we, we are struggling with the amount of floor area in this project because the basement counts against us because it's more, more above grade than below. So we are seeking to increase the floor area by 15% over what was there 50 years ago. In doing so, we will still be the smallest house on the block. It's just that, you know, none of the other houses, the basements count on the block. So we're, we're requesting to increase the floor area, but we're also requesting to make a higher second floor and to build it above the existing walls on the west side and then do an addition on the south side to, in order to kind of build out the square footage that we're looking for.
And you are essentially building along the existing building lines, is that correct? On, on the side yards, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so that really the only newly introduced variation would be for the increase in floor area ratio, is that correct?
That's right.
In your opinion, are you, the plans that you've prepared, if, if implemented, would they in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
No, I think they would have improved the, improved the neighborhood.
I have prepared an affidavit, is that correct?
Yeah.
On your behalf?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
I have no further questions of Todd, and with that, I would rest.
Great, thank you, John. And yes, so it sounds like hers appear, as it is with many older buildings, is the basement. Any questions from the board?
Since Commissioner Esposito, with Mr. Israel, can you tell us what the expected finished ceiling height in the basement will be after the renovation?
Yeah, I believe we've got about like seven foot nine or something like that. It's, it's nothing extraordinary.
Okay, thank you. And the overall building height?
The overall building.
I missed one. It looks like it's on the screen now, but I can't read it.
There.
Maybe it's on the screen now, in the lower right. I can't read that.
I see the section on the lower right-hand corner, but I can't read it.
I've got it. The, the proposed zoning height is gonna be sort of the maximum allowed, 30 feet for this.
Okay. Okay, so it will conform. Thank you.
Yeah.
With that, I would rest.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor, we've got you for one more. So I'm gonna now call calendar number 83-21-S and 84-21-Z. If everyone can, please allow me to first read the department's recommendation. So for calendar number 83-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of a gas station with a one-story mini mart, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Abdul Qadar Saleh, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 18th, 2020, with site and landscape plan dated February 18th, 2021, prepared by Projekt Studio LLC.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Pekarski for the client, Abdul Saleh. Abdul is the owner of the gas station at the northeast corner of Cicero and Chicago Avenue and has owned it for many years. He, the, the building was built in 1970, and it's now tired. It is in need of, of rehabbing. It, it no longer complies with market demand. And my client is interested in completely rehabbing the, the building and the mini mart. The C-store will contain about 25, 2,100 square feet. It will measure 71 by 32. It will increase the quality of the products that are capable of being sold at this location. And what we're seeking, number one, is a special use. And this is in a protected manufacturing district. So we have a few extra questions that we must address. And I believe, and I believe, I know that Mr. Ryan has addressed them in his report and will speak to them today. I have with me, of course, Mr. Saleh and our architect, Mr. Gregory Jomak, as well as Joseph Ryan, our real estate appraisal witness. Please state your name. I would call Mr. Saleh first, please.
My name is Abdul Ghader, last name Salah, S-A-L-E-H.
And you are the owner of the gas station at the northeast corner of Cicero and Chicago Avenue?
Yes, sir.
When did you purchase this?
2010.
And is it your opinion that the gas station is fatigued and the mini mart is in need of rehabbing?
Yes, sir.
And is it your intention, if the board sees fit, to grant the special use to completely remove the existing mini mart and rehab it?
Yes, sir.
And is this in line with the demand of your customers who are interested in a better quality and a better mix of goods produced at this location?
Yes.
Now, what was the purchase price of, of your gas station?
One million one.
And approximately how much is, is going to be involved in rehabbing the existing gas station?
Million, million one.
And you feel that you will be able to acquire a reasonable rate of return, even though you're talking about $2,100,000?
Yes.
And you've been an institution at this location for all the time that you've been in operation, is that true?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions of the owner. I would, with the board's permission, call the architect Gregory Jomak. Gregory, are you available?
Let's see if we've got him on, John. One second. Yep, he's, um.
I'm here, John.
Great, okay, there he is.
Okay, great. Please state your name, address, and occupation.
Gregory Jomak, 2810 RFD, Long Grove, Illinois, Licensed Architect, Principal of Projekt Studio LLC, the Architect of Record for the project here at 801 to 807 North Cicero Avenue.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, can you briefly, and I mean briefly, describe the proposed changes to the gas station and mini mart?
The change is to remove an existing gas station that's decrepit and falling apart and develop a new gas station that's approximately 2,460 square feet that's located in the northeast corner of the property that's gonna better utilize the space of the land, which my client's paying a lot of property tax on. He's going to be selling prepackaged food items as well as have a small service counter where he's gonna be preparing some small food items and, of course, selling gasoline outside.
And in order to accomplish the goal of, of the rehab and reconstruction, we will need a special use located in this PMD, and we will need a variation from the minimum requirement of 20,000 square feet of land, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, have you established an opinion as to whether or not the proposed use will in any way alter the essential character of the neighborhood in which it's located?
It will not.
Will it have any adverse effect upon the neighborhood? And by that, I mean the industrial neighborhood, of course.
No, it will not.
Do you think, in your opinion, will there be any conflict with the manufacturing activities that are, would, would be carried on in the Protected Manufacturing District?
No.
I have no further questions of this witness. I would call as my third wis, witness, Mr. Joseph Ryan.
Yep, thank you, John, and, and Mr. Ryan is sworn in and recognized.
Good evening, Mr. Ryan. Joe, can you, at my request, have you examined the subject site at the northeast corner of Cicero and Chicago Avenue?
Mr. Ryan, you're muted.
That's rare.
Sorry. Yes, I did, John.
Okay, can you briefly describe the subject site?
A rectangular site located at the northeast, northeast corner of Cicero and Chicago Avenue. The site's improved with a obsolete three-bay gas station improvement and a canopy, which will be replaced with a more modern type C-store.
Is it true that the original gas station was built around 1970?
It certainly looks that way, yes.
And can you comment on the, the neighborhood and whether or not there will be any conflict with the manufacturing activities that are carried on? First of all, are there any manufacturing activities that are carried on? And secondly, would the proposed use in, in any way conflict with those activities?
Well, the, the, this is on the west end of the PMD, and the PMD extends to the manufacturing and warehouse uses to the east. Both Cicero and Chicago Avenue, for the most part, are commercial corridors and not industrial corridors. This property acts as a buffer between the neighborhood and the, as it transitions into industrial use. And all those industrial uses have a need for this property as well. It's underserved by typical grocery stores, so this use is beneficial to the neighborhood and has no negative impact on the manufacturing neighborhood.
In your opinion, would the proposed use in any way infringe on the marketing of other properties in the Protected Manufacturing District?
No, as you, as you mentioned, this use has been here 50 years and has had no conflict with. and has had no conflict with, uh, uh, buying or selling industrial buildings to the east.
I have prepared an affidavit on your behalf. Are you, uh, familiar with that fact?
I am.
And if I ask you the questions that appear in that affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
They would be exactly the same.
Then I have no further questions of, of Mr. Ryan.
Great, thank you, John. Um, any questions from the board?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. Could someone just confirm the scope? Is this a demo in your construction? Is it rehab? Are you adding to an existing that just isn't clear to me?
Uh, this is Gregory Jomek, the architect. I could, uh, elaborate on that. It's a complete demo and rebuild of everything inside the property line. The existing building will be removed, the existing canopy, dispensers, underground tanks, everything will be removed and replaced.
Okay, thank you. How long do you think, um, that will take? Just curious.
Permitting is a little bit of a question mark, but construction, uh, should take approximately six months.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Sanchez, uh, could you talk a little bit about the, uh, hardship with respect to the variation?
Um, I, I could speak to, well, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, Joseph.
Well, the, the, um, the site is short of the minimum lot area for gas stations, but that, that came about, um, in, in the, uh, zoning ordinance that was written after this. I have appraised hundreds of gas stations in, in the city and county and, uh, there are numerous gas stations, which I listed in my report, that are less than twenty thousand square feet. To require the hardship would be, he would have to buy the adjacent property, uh, to meet the minimum lot area, which, uh, this property has existed in this location on this lot size for over fifty years with, uh, no impact, so that would be a, a significant hardship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, additional questions? Well, Mr. Saleh, I'm gonna, I would ask about the operation of the gas station, but as you've been operating it for thirty years, um, it seems like it's been pretty smooth. So with no more questions, we'll take this under consideration and thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna call matter eighty-five dash twenty-one dash S and eighty-six dash twenty-one dash Z. While everyone gets situated, I'll go ahead and read this recommendation. For the special use of eighty-five dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of this community center, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Progressive Baptist Church. And Mr. Powell, um, whenever you're present, just let me know.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. Is this, is this, uh, Lowell Powell?
This is Lewis Powell.
Lewis Powell, sorry about that. Lewis Powell, I had your name written down. My apologies.
That's okay.
Okay, um, well, yeah, get started with your case. We can either swear in your witnesses right away or you can
Could you please, Mr. Chairman, could you swear them in right away?
Yep, absolutely. Um, so first up, do we have Pastor Charles Dates?
Yes, that's Charlie Dates.
Okay, thank you. Um, Pastor Dates, um, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Dr. Charlie Dates, thirty-six fifty-eight South Wentworth, uh, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero nine.
Thank you, Dr. Dates, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Um, Kareem Musawir, are you on the line?
I am.
And, uh, Kareem, um, can you please give your name and address for the record?
Kareem Musawir, my office is at two-twenty-one North LaSalle. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, myself and Mr. Powell.
You have to mute the speakers on this other device, not just the microphone.
Just the mic.
I just said, okay.
Okay.
You have to mute the speakers on your device.
And Kareem, we can get you sworn in and then, then you can mute everything and we can, uh, move on. So, um, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, great, and we, um, we recognize you for appearing in front of us, uh, many times before.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is a Mr. Howard Garrison on the line? How about a, a Mr. Nash?
Yes, Mr. Nash is here.
Great, and Mr. Nash, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Gawain Nash the second, one-eight-two-two-five Burnham Avenue, Lansing, Illinois, six zero four-three-eight.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. That should be everyone. Counselor, um,
I'm on mute.
Do you expect Mr. Garrison to be on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's see if we can find him then.
He, he is on.
Can Mr. Garrison, can you, um, can you try to speak?
I have two unknown, uh, names in there. That's only one is Jabe Barahas and Karina Egwalar.
Counselor, what's, um, what's Mr. Garrison's, um, role as a witness? Cause we can, we can potentially move forward until he gets, um, added in. Counselor Powell?
You're muted.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Sorry about that. Mister, answer your question. Mister Garrison is the project architect. Mister Musawir is trying to raise him on his cell phone because it's recently, it's a couple of minutes ago, we were actually in contact with him, letting him know we were about to come up.
Okay, okay, great, so, um, Kareem, let us know if you have luck getting him on.
Sure.
And Counselor, actually, you know, uh, maybe we just start with the case in chief. You give an intro. Uh, we've got some confidence that Mr. Garrison will be on, so then we'll Yeah, great, thank you very much.
Good, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Louis W. Powell the third. I'm an attorney with offices at fifty-three West Jackson here in Chicago. I'm here today in behalf of the applicant, Progressive Baptist Church, seeking the approval of a special use to establish a community center, community center facility in a RT dash four residential district. And Mr. Chairman, we are also seeking the approval of a variation to reduce the front setback along South Princeton from fourteen-point-six-nine feet to zero. North side setback, setback from two feet to one foot foot. South to be four-point-three feet, four-point-three-five feet and combined to be five-point-three feet. And to reduce the parking setback required to prevent obstruction of a sidewalk by cars from twenty feet to zero for the conversion of a single-family residence into a community center on a through lot. Again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, we have with us today, Mr. Reverend Charlie Dates, the pastor of the applicant, Progressive Baptist Church, and Deacon Nash, as well as our land use planning consultant, Kareem Musawir. We also have in attendance, our, our project architect, Howard Garrison, who I believe will be joining us shortly. For, uh, Mr. Chairman, my first witness will be Pastor Dates, Mac Bucieford.
Yep, go right ahead, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, okay? Pastor, please state your name, the name of the church, and the address for the record.
My name again is Dr. Charlie Dates. The name of the church is the Progressive Baptist Church. It is located at thirty-six fifty-eight South Wentworth Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six zero nine.
Thank you. Pastor, how long have you been a pastor of Progressive Church?
For Progressives one hundred and, uh, two-year history, I've been the, uh, pastor for ten years.
Very good. Pastor, would you describe the need for the use and the proposed operation of the community center?
Progressive is located in Chicago's Bronzeville Douglas neighborhood, which, as it relates to counseling services, is, uh, under-resourced. Uh, we are hoping to open a center within walking distance where members of the community can receive, uh, counseling services, much of which would, would be complimentary, uh, services that they would normally have to travel downtown or get on the bus to get. So these are licensed professional counselors, uh, for women in domestic, uh, violence situations, regular, um, PTSD counseling for teens in the neighborhood and adults and, uh, women in crisis pregnancy. We also are combining in the center a justice function which will enable and empower the community to identify needs that the community has and to, uh, quite frankly, meet those needs. Offering free legal aid to members in the community on select hours of the week, as well as, uh, offering complimentary representation for lower-level cases and educational seminars for seniors in the neighborhood as it relates to, uh, estate planning and other needs like that. So, given, uh, Progressive's long and rich history in this community, uh, we think this is a, a critical time in American history and in Chicago history to address matters of justice and counseling for the neighbors in this, uh, community that's so desperately needed.
Pastor, current church staff along with two licensed counselors will be managing the community center. Is that correct?
Yes.
The redevelopment of the existing two-story single-family residence, including the proposed two-hundred-and-ninety-two square foot, two-story rear addition, will be designed and operated in such a manner as to be compatible with the residential nature of adjacent improvements. Pastor, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, we are also here seeking the approval of a variation in order to reduce the required front setback along South Princeton Avenue from fourteen-point-six-nine feet to zero-point-zero-zero feet. To reduce the north side setback from two feet to one foot, south side setback to remain four-point-three feet for a combined five-point-three feet. And to reduce the parking setback required from the front property line to prevent obstruction of the sidewalk by parked cars from twenty feet to zero feet in order to allow the conversion of the existing two-story single-family residence into a community center on the substandard through lot. This is being requested in order to establish two off-street parking spaces on the rear of the lot which fronts onto South Princeton Avenue. Pastor, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Along with redevelopment and proposed rear addition to the subject property, you are also establishing two off-street parking spaces along with a four-space bike rack. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We have the support of Alderman Pat Dow for this project. Is that correct, Pastor?
Yes, it is.
We have filed a map amendment to establish the, this use in a business district and the Alderman asked us to withdraw the map amendment indicated she would support the special use instead. Is that correct, Pastor?
That's correct.
Which is why we're here today. Is that correct, Pastor?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of the pastor. Ask the, the, the ability to bring him back if necessary.
Great, thank you, Counselor, and, you know, I want a quick question and then maybe what we'll do is get everyone else in the record and come back for all the questions. But one quick question for the variation. It's really just to get in compliance with the conversion of the building, right? There's no addition happening?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any other immediate questions from the board or else we'll circle back to the, the pastor every, after everyone has spoken?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, at this particular time, ask our land use planner, Mr. Musawir, to step forward.
Great, thank you, Counselor.
Hold on just a second, he stepped aside, dude. Mr. Chairman, can you hear him?
Can, can he speak again?
Kareem, speak again.
No, we can't hear him.
Just bear with us, Mr. Chairman. He's just a couple of feet away from me. We're in the same location.
I think he left the meeting, so he's just coming back and
Mr. Chairman, can they speak from the same computer? Is that permitted?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Right, we, we'll do that. He's just a couple of feet away from me.
Perfect.
Okay, I, I think I'm on now. I, I had to go into another room because of all the echoes. This is Kareem Musawir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Musawir, please state your name.
Kareem Musawir, I have my offices at two-twenty-one North LaSalle Street in Chicago. I'm their consultant.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I ask you to please accept Mr. Musawir as an expert.
Yep, we accept Mr. Musawir as, as an expert.
Thank you. We have appeared and given testimony before the zoning board for appeals for many years. Is that correct?
Yes.
You are familiar with the subject property located at thirty-nine twenty-four South Wells Street, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Have you been to inspect the subject property?
Yes, and the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you. In your opinion, would the, will, will the proposed community center meet all the general criteria for a special use as set forth in the zoning ordinance?
Yes, in my opinion, it would.
Thank you. And that it complies with all applicable standards due to our request for the approval of the stated variation?
Yes.
That it provides a public convenience and will not have an adverse impact on the welfare of the neighborhood?
I believe it would have a benefit for the welfare of the neighborhood.
Thank you. And is compared, compatible with the character of the area in terms of site, building, and design?
It is, yes.
Is compatible with the area in terms of its operation regarding hours of operation, traffic, so forth and so on?
Yes, the proposed hours of operation are practically four hours a day. It, it would comply with the nature of the, uh, it would be compatible with the nature of the residential, uh, uses in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And would the project promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
And requires and requested setbacks are compatible with the nature of other improvements on the other side of the subject property?
Yes, as indicated, uh, this is a through lot which has this rear, uh, on, uh, South Princeton Avenue and so does the other And so does the other residential improvements along Wells Street. And most of those who are recently, uh, improved have garages off of Princeton Avenue or parking spaces off of South Princeton Avenue, such as this is proposed to be.
Thank you. What is the nature of the improvements on the west side of South Princeton Avenue?
Well, that's an industrial building. It has a huge parking lot, uh, for those, uh, people who come to work there or visit there. And the, uh, entire, um, west side of South Princeton, uh, as a result of that is, uh, vacant and off-street parking is available there as well.
And other recent improvements along the west side of South Wells Street have off-street parking facilities within, from South Princeton?
That's correct.
Thank you. And the subject site is within a one thousand feet of a CTA tr- transit station and is even closer to the Pershing Road bus line?
Yes, uh, Pershing Road is thirty-ninth Street in this, uh, location. And there is a bus line there as well as, as you indicated, uh, two blocks away, there's the CTA, um, subway line.
Mr. Musawar, have you referred a report of your findings?
I did.
And did you make a determination that the requested variation can meet the standards required for approval?
Yes, I did.
And did you, excuse, did you make a report of your findings of fact and file a copy of that report with the board?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Musawar, should you continue to testify, would your testimony be s- the same or substantially the same as the answers in your report?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is our last witness. As I stated, Mr. Garrison, the, uh, architect, uh, should be present when we stand prepared to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, great. Um. So do you want to get Mr. Garrison on or only if there's questions?
Only if there are questions.
Okay, cool. Um, questions from the board?
Commissioner Sanchez, uh, wha- what are the hours gonna be for the, uh, community center?
This is Pastor Charlie Dates. Uh, our proposed hours right now are that it's closed on Sunday and Monday from twelve noon to four P M. On Tuesday, from two P M. To six P M. On Wednesday, twelve noon to four P M. On Thursday, ten A M. To two P M. On Friday and Saturday.
And will there be, um, uh, protocols with regard to COVID and, and, you know, masks, masks and that kind of thing?
Lord willing, by the time this thing opens, COVID will be out of here. But if, if it remains at that, that point, the same protocols that protect the operation of the church will apply to the center. So yes, masks, social distancing and, uh, cleaning.
I'll say amen to that, too.
And Pastor Dates, do you have an anticipation on a daily basis of, um, of how many people will be in and out of the, the, um, community center?
It really depends on the community need. My anticipation is that just as the center opens, as, uh, persons in the neighborhood come to learn of its services, it'll have a slower-paced traffic. My guess is, given the length of time for counseling or in meeting with attorneys, particularly on the weekend, maybe twenty to twenty-five people a day uh, as it gets moving, much less early on.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Hi, yes, this is Jolene Saul. I have a couple of questions. Um, for the, uh, requested variations, um, are the front and side setback requests due to the fence or for some other reason? And can you, uh, address the hardship there?
This is Kareem Musawar, like this, uh, architect that's not on yet. Uh, there is an addition on the rear of the building, which, uh, lines up with the existing sidewalks of the building, which, uh, require a variation.
Um, Chairman?
Yep.
This is Steve Valenziano.
Yep, here's Steve.
So Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development, to answer the, uh, Commissioner's question. It's the, um, this is a through lot, so it has two front setbacks, one on Princeton, one on Wells. That needs to be reduced because you cannot have parking in the front yard. And then by, uh, reducing the, uh, the front setback on Princeton, uh, you, you've now increased the side setback and parking cannot be in that side setback either. So that's, that's the reason for the, um, variations. The block historically had, uh, Princeton was treated more as an alley and the parking was off of the alley. And some of newer development that has occurred, uh, a few doors down that have come before the board have also reduced their Princeton, uh, setback uh, to put their, uh, garages and parking off of Princeton rather than off of Wells. So this is kind of reestablishing the fo- former character when there's, it's a lot of buildings have been knocked down on this block, but it's kind of, uh, reestablishing the character of Wells being the front, uh, of the property and, uh, Princeton being the rear. But in doing so, because they're through lots, they have to reduce these setbacks.
Okay, so all of them are related to the through lot nature of the site. That's helpful. Thank you. Um, and then I know there are a lot of vacant, um, lots on this block. It looks like there is some residential though, so I'm just curious if you have talked to any of the neighbors there, if they have any thoughts or reservations about this, um, community center being located here?
This is, this is Pastor Charlie Dates. For the record, we absolutely have. Our, our church has a longstanding, um, wonderful reputation in this community. But before we, uh, purchased the building, we went to the neighbors on the block, particularly one developer in particular, who has built about three or four, who lives on the block. And he has built about three or four condo buildings on the block. We've also talked with the owner of the gas station, of the, uh, empty convenience store at thirty-nine oh four South Wentworth, as well as the Louisiana Chicken spot at the corner about it as well and have gotten their support.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, it sounds like there's none. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming in for this good work. Um, I'm familiar of the impactful work of the Progressive Baptist Church, so I, um, I appreciate you guys coming in front of us and telling us about this project. And we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend. We are moving along to calendar number eighty-seven dash twenty-one dash.
Chairman, this is Jolene Saul. I will be recusing myself from this item.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Saul. All right, I'm gonna give everyone a moment to.
Yes, finish it up right now.
Hey Kareem, you're still, uh, um.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor, you're still on, so i- if you could just, actually, I'll mute you. If it works. Okay, um, to eighty-seven dash twenty-one dash X. Um, Donna or Michael, when, when you're present, just let me know.
Yes. Mike, are you on? Mike Noonan?
Yes, here I am.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, you start.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Noonan. I'm here with my co-counsel, Donna Pugh. And together we represent the applicant Mural Park LLC.
Great. And Michael, really quick, we're gonna go ahead and read. Um, Steve Valenziano from the Department of Planning and Development will read the recommendation on this matter.
Thank you.
Steve, whenever you're ready.
Okay, uh, Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development for the city of Chicago. Um, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the off-site location of thirty-four requ- required accessory parking spaces within a new one hundred and eighty-six space, non-required accessory parking garage to serve the proposed office, uh, offices at nine twenty West Colleton Street, provided the special uses issued solely to the applicant Mural Park LLC. And the development is consistent with the building elevations in site plan uh, dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, prepared by Hirsch MPG Architects and Planning as they pertain to the improvement of the zoning lot only. In addition, the applicant will be responsible for the installation of an ADA-compliant sidewalk improvement along the west side of Jordan Court, adjoining the front property line of the subject site. ADA-compliant sidewalk connections to West Nineteenth Street and West Colleton Street, and the installation of any traffic control and safety signs as they relate to the proposed garage. All improvements to and within the public right-of-way must be approved by the Chicago Department of Transportation and be in accordance with the construction standards for work in the public way.
Great. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. Um, and I, I understand that we will have, um, an obj- objector speaking on this one, so I'm gonna quick read a few, um, a few instructions for which everyone probably heard earlier in the day. Um, so bear with me on that. Um, as we have some objectors here, I want, I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. This is a hearing. So we as a board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here is how the hearing will proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all their witnesses. Then we'll turn to the objectors and the objectors can put on their case as well, as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then we'll finally return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. Finally, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, board members will be asking questions of both applicant and objectors as they wish. Um, so with that, Don and Mike, feel free to go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, like I said, my name is Mike Noonan here with Donna Pugh. Uh, we are both land use attorneys with Foley and Lardner with offices located at three twenty-one North Clark Street, three suite three thousand in Chicago. Together, we represent the applicant Mural Park LLC, as well as its affiliate Condor Partners. Here with me today are applicant representative Michael McLean of Mural Park LLC, urban planner Maria Pio of Urban Works, architect Patricia Saldana Naki of Urban Works, traffic engineer Luay Abuno of K, KLOA, economic impact expert Jeff Dickinson of SB Friedman, and architect Howard Hirsch of Hirsch MPG, who will be available for questions. The applicant Mural Park LLC is before you today, seeking a special use for off-site parking. The applicant is seeking to locate thirty-four required spaces of the proposed garage located at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan Court to serve an office building at nine twenty West Colleton. Proposed garage will have a total of one hundred and eighty-six parking spaces for the exclusive use of the tenant at nine twenty West Colleton, and it will be operated by the applicant. Garage itself is an as-of-right improvement as parking is permitted in this district. Garage has gone through DPD's design review process, and as a result, many changes were made, including cladding the entire building in masonry and limiting openings in the building to be more consistent with the existing warehouse buildings in the area. Also during that process, the city required a continuous sidewalk between Nineteenth Street and Colleton along the west side of Jordan in order to accommodate pedestrian traffic that will exit the garage, travel west on Colleton to the office building. This part, this request is part of a larger Mural Park project, and the parking in this garage will be used for tenant planning and bringing four hundred jobs to the Pillson neighborhood. The applicant has engaged in significant community outreach for both this application specifically and for the Mural Park project as a whole. Specifically, the applicant has received five letters of support from nearby property owners and organizations which have been submitted to the board. Um, as, as the board is aware, we've been, been unable to reach an agreement with our neighbor to the east regarding the design of the garage. And at this point, I'd like to ask for the, the board's guidance. Um, it, it's my understanding that, um, our, our neighbor is willing to um, take out their, remove their objection so long as certain conditions are met regarding the department's recommendation. So I wanted to ask if we could get them on to confirm that they're withdrawing their objection. And I'd like the chair to confirm that we will be giving our full case or abbreviated case. We're prepared to do both.
Okay, um, yeah, is Bridget O'Keefe on?
I am on, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bridget. Um, yeah, so if you could address that understanding, that would be helpful.
So, um, first of all, it's been a long day, so I appreciate your patience. Um, we've had conversations going on between the city and, uh, Condor till literally about two minutes ago. Um, we, uh, have reviewed the, uh, resolution that was presented by Mr. Valenziano and which agrees to certain modifications that uh, provide an opportunity for all parties to continue the con- conversation on the open, few open issues, very few open issues that remain. Um, so based on the understanding that the alderman will host a meeting uh, occupied by, attended by Condor, who's already agreed, um, DPD, CDOT, um, and our office, um, and our client, uh, as long as all those parties will agree to meet, uh, review these open issues and negotiating good faith, um, to try to resolve them, understanding that CDOT will be the ultimate arbiter. Um, we would waive our objection, but we would like to confirm that all parties agree to that.
Okay, great. Thank you, counselor. Um.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, yep.
Uh, one additional point that Bridget and I have been discussing, Bridget, if you could state for the record that you withdraw your, uh, procedural objection to the use of the February eighteenth plan on the basis of the date of filing?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Once I, can we just get the approval of everybody to agree to the good faith negotiations on these open issues? Would that just be possible? I know Condor's agreed, correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Right.
Uh, Chairman, Chairman?
Yes, yep, yep.
This is Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development. I can only, uh, agree that I will, uh, participate on behalf of the Department of Planning and Development. I cannot speak for the aldermen and I cannot speak for CDOT. Although I'm sure with all the conversations that have been going on today, back and forth and phone calls and everything else, everyone will be in the meeting. I cannot speak for them. I cannot say, yes, Alderman, uh, Thompson will be at the meeting. Uh, you know, he has to say that for himself. And the same for CDOT.
We know that the alderman's gonna be there because the alderman has kindly offered to host this, and we appreciate his suggestion because it's a great opportunity to get these things behind us. You see, that's not there today? On, on.
See that, see that, see that is never here at the hearings. We talked with CDOT beforehand. I've been in touch with CDOT throughout the day. Uh, as you know, we've gone through like, uh, I don't know how many iterations of this plan and this recommendation today. So here's where we are. Uh, I, I, I believe, I don't have any reason to believe that, uh, the Department of Transportation would not participate and would not participate in good faith. They've been involved in this since we've been talking about this. They were involved in it the other night. They've been continuously involved in it. So I, I can't speak for them. I can't say, oh, absolutely, they'll be there. I don't see why they would not.
Well, thank you, Mr. Valenziano. We appreciate that. Uh, based on that representation, we will, uh, waive our objection to the timely filing, uh, uh, the lack of timely filing, excuse me, of the February eighteenth plan, which would mean that I think we have to flip out the site plan to reflect more current plan we all negotiated.
Right.
And it, and it's.
Mr. Chair, I believe, um, staff has received that plan and, and has add- added it to the, the slide deck.
Perfect. Um, is it added at this point in time?
Um, when we get to it, I will let you know.
Okay, perfect. We'll give it a few minutes and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, since our neighbor is withdrawing their objection, we can proceed with our abbreviated testimony today?
Yes, I, I, I believe that is right. We're, I'm playing a little bit of catch-up. I've been on chair, chair duty all day, so, uh,
Sure.
That is, that is correct. Can you just confirm that it's correct again, Bridget, so that I have it, um, clear in, in my mind? And then we'll move forward without an objection?
Right, we have waived our objection to the lack of timely filing of this plan that was dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, which I, I, I will know if it's the right plan. It, I go to the second page. The second page shows.
Perfect. And then with that objection, you won't be objecting to anything else today. Is that correct?
No, no, we should not be objecting to any. No, no, we should not be objecting to anything else today.
Okay, great, then we'll make sure the plan gets up. And thank you for that clarification. Like I said, just trying to catch up with any conversations you guys have been having.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could thank Condor and Mr. Valenziano and the aldermen for their willingness to continue this conversation through the course of the day. It's greatly appreciated.
Yep, thank you for that, thanks. And from my seat, I thank you all as well. We like when some compromise has been struck. I know sometimes it's more difficult when we're virtual because you can't, you can't talk in the audience. So I appreciate the effort that went into it.
All right, if I could ask staff to move to a slide that shows a, for the first floor garage plan, go back. That is, the plan that is being displayed right now is not the correct plan. That's the February ninth plan. That right here, stop. This, this is the February eighteenth plan, and counsel, if you're all right with this, we can proceed. Is this the plan you're comfortable with?
Yes, that is the plan we are comfortable with. Thank you, sir.
Great, perfect.
Thank you. So back for the record, my name is Mike Noonan with Foley and Lardner, and I'd like to call my first witness, Michael McLean with Mural Park LLC.
Hello. Michael, when you're on, can you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Michael McLean, two twenty-five West Hubbard Street, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six five four.
Thank you. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Thank you. Mr. McLean, can, I'm just going to ask you one more time about your name, profession, and business address?
Yes, Michael McLean with Condor Partners at two twenty-five West Hubbard Street, sixth floor, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six five four. And I'm a real estate developer.
And what is the position you have at Mural Park LLC?
I am the manager of the investment entity in the, in the project.
And is it correct that Mural Park LLC is an affiliate entity of Condor Partners?
Yes.
And what's your position with Condor?
So I'm, I'm one of two managers in the Mural Park LLC. In addition to being an agent of Mural Park LLC, which is a manager, it's a manager managed LLC, not a member managed LLC. Mural Park is the owner of the land and the buildings known as Mural, as Mural Park, including the Jordan Court lot that we're discussing today. And I am a partner at Condor Partners, which again offices on Hubbard Street.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Can you tell me briefly about the special use that you are seeking and how it ties into the larger Mural Park project that your company is developing?
Yes, today we're seeking a special use for thirty-four off-site required parking spaces in order to occupy a hundred and three thousand square foot building located at nine twenty Colleton, just about four hundred so feet away. We have assigned lease with HCSC, which is the parent of Blue Cross Blue Shield, for the entire building to move one hundred thousand square feet of their, of the occupied space at Millennium Park at their headquarters building to the neighborhood as part of a larger community outreach program from Mural Park as well as the tenant HCSC. We do not have the land to efficiently house all the parking onsite at nine twenty West Colleton. So we acquired this lot on Jordan Court, which had the zoning for, and the FAR for enough parking for tenants of that size. And we are requesting thirty-four of the sixty required parking spaces to be acknowledged in this garage along with the remainder of non-required parking spaces to serve the tenant.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. And can you briefly tell me about the community outreach that Condor has conducted both for the Mural Park project as a whole and also specifically for this application?
Sure, from what, Mural Park started back in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, when we started our process in getting to know the community, we did not come into the Pilsen community with a known project or a product type. Instead, we had friends and low, and local residents introduce us to the neighborhood and into many of the states, to many of the stakeholders in the neighborhood, including very influential groups that have done great work in the community, the Resurrection Project, Eighteenth Street Development Corp., and the Pilsen Alliance. Through that, we were able to educate ourselves on the dynamics of the community, create a project that addressed several of the, the current issues going on with the, the community in order to help bring development without displacement to Pilsen. Primarily, the fact that over nearly twelve thousand out of thirteen thousand people get, have to leave and go to work outside of the Pilsen community led us to formulate, formulate a game plan that we would foster job growth within the community and daytime population growth, adding to the economic benefit of, of the investment. So we develop, we're developing two one hundred thousand square foot office buildings in an end zoning, which is allowed, and parking is calculated as part of that, that use as the users are evolved. Our outreach went on for years to determine this project as well as, as it continues and grows and evolves to the, the parking lot that is meant to be a benefit to house the larger tenant that we established. In doing so, we had both formal and informal conversations with the community. Those do include local artists and activists as well as the formal groups. We did receive letters of support, which I do hope that the Board of Appeals received from ESDC, which is Economic Strategies Development Corp., formerly Eighteenth Street Development Corp., a forty-year entity, not-for-profit entity in the, in the in Pilsen, as well as the Resurrection Project, another not-for-profit housing and social welfare company that has been in Pilsen for over forty years. Another, a letter from the City Garden Waldorf School, which is across the street from our project and Nineteenth Street. The Karbowski's, Ivana Karbowski, who is the developer of the, the land at Jordan and Colleton directly south of the proposed garage, as well as Alejandra Romero, an internationally renowned artist and activist based in the Pilsen area, who has both substantial art created for the project in, in our building and his studio just across the street from, from one of our projects. In addition to that, we've had conversations with Ryan Jackson of Open Books. He's the general manager of the, of the facility next door to us, which is a not-for-profit book sharing group that distributes books throughout the city. The artist Cent Rock and representatives of the Wall School that is on Colleton and Peoria.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is it correct that you filled out an affidavit testifying to this and other facts related to this project?
Yes.
And if I were to ask you to testify further, would the remainder of your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. I'd like to move to my next witness, please. I'd like to call Maria Pio with Urban Works.
Great, Ms. Pio, when you're present, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Maria Pejo, I, P E L L O T.
Great, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Pio, can you tell the board a little bit about your background, qualifications, and experience as a planner?
Sure, I am an associate principal and design director at Urban Works, and I am a planner certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, as well as a registered architect in the state of Illinois. I have a bachelor's degree in, in architecture from Florida International University and a master's from University of South Florida School of Architecture and Community Design. And as an architect and planner at Urban Works for over nineteen years, I have worked on all types of projects, including office, commercial, retail, education projects, multifamily and specialty housing, such as the La Casa student housing in, in Pilsen, and urban and master plans for nonprofits, public agencies, and private developers, among other project types.
Thank you, Ms. Pio. And have, is it correct that you've appeared in front of this board before, the Chicago Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would like it if the board would recognize Ms. Pio as an expert?
Yeah, no, we, is Mr. Dickinson an expert as well? Or who, just so I get the roles right?
Sure, so Ms. Pio is our planning expert. She prepared the planning report along with Patricia Saldana-Nacki, who is an architect but not a planner. And then we've got Luay Abuna, our traffic planner. We've got Jeff Dickinson, he is an economic impact consultant, and he would be our, our expert for that part of, part of our testimony. And then we've got our project architect, Howard Hirsch, on the line for questions, but we don't have a formal testimony prepared for him. We're just going to have him, the board has questions.
Great, yeah, no, thank you for that breakdown. It's helpful, and yeah, we recognize Ms. Pejo as an expert based on her report and qualifications.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pio, are you, is it correct that you are familiar with the applicant's request at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan Court?
I am.
And is it correct that you also prepared a planning report in connection with this project? And if so, has that been submitted to the board?
Yes, I have prepared the report in collaboration with my colleague Patricia Saldana-Nacki, as amended on February eleventh of two thousand and twenty-one, and it has been submitted to the board.
And Ms. Pio, are you familiar with the plans dated February eighteenth that the city requested on Thursday and that we've been, that have been the subject of much debate so far?
Yes, I am.
And although the plan dated February eighteenth is different from the plans you originally reviewed, in your expert opinion, would these changes materially affect the conclusions you arrived at in your report?
No, the revised plans do not materially affect the conclusions of the planning report we prepared since they still meet the special use criteria.
Great, and for the, for the benefit of the board, would you be able to summarize the main conclusions of your report, including how this project meets the special use criteria?
Sure, I can do that. The report was prepared as an evaluation of the special use request to locate the thirty-four required parking spaces for the office use at nine twenty West Colleton remotely within the proposed parking garage at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan Court. The office use is located in M District, and per zoning code, required accessory parking for non-residential uses in M Districts are allowed to be located off-site as a special use, provided that the distance between the nearest off-site parking spot and the entry to the use is less than six hundred feet. And in our case, it is four hundred and ninety-three feet. As detailed in the report, it is important to note that the proposed parking garage can be built as of right in the C one dash two district, and that no variances of any type are being requested. The existing gravel lot is already being used as a surface parking lot, so the use is parking as a lot, of the lot as a parking garage is not a foreign use. It is our understanding that most of the approximately four hundred employees of the proposed office use will not drive, and instead they will use one of several public transportation options that are within a half mile or ten-minute walk from the office. And for those employees that do choose to drive, the parking garage is intended to alleviate the use of the demand for the existing street parking, particularly during the hours of nine to five, which will allow residents and visitors and others working in the area to continue using the existing parking spaces.
Thank you, Ms. Pio. And if I were to continue to, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the facts and conclusions presented in your report that the board has a copy of in their file?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Pio. I'd like to call our next witness, Patricia Saldana-Nacki with Urban Works.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Nacki, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Patricia Saldana-Nacki, one twenty-five South Clark, Suite twenty seventy, Chicago.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Ms. Saldana-Nacki, can you tell the board a little bit about your background and your qualifications?
Sure, I'm a registered architect in the state of Illinois. I've served as an adjunct associate professor at UIC, also facilitator at Archie Works, and also have been a thesis advisor for the Master in Architecture Program at the School of the Art Institute. I'm currently a part-time professor at IIT School of Architecture, and I'm also a fellow of the American Institute of Architects, which is the highest membership honor bestowed on a member. I'm a firm owner of Urban Works for twenty-seven years. We've won over forty local and national design awards. I've lectured and also worked on the design of the Pilsen Master Plan in two thousand and thirteen. As Maria Pio mentioned, our office worked on the Pilsen TRP La Casa Building, which won first place for the Dree House Award in Excellence in Community Design. Our planning work has included the Olympic planning, the Cabrini planning. We even worked on the Benito Juarez High School Plan and outdoor space as CPS managing architects. And most recently, I'm a member and also presenter of the Pilsen Twenty-Fifth Ward and Mexico City New Alliance that was formed this year to strengthen the cultural and economic exchanges between the two cities and specifically within Pilsen.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, does the board recognize Ms. Saldana-Nacki as an expert?
Yes, we do, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Saldana-Nacki, am I correct that you are familiar with the applicant's request at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan Court?
Yes, I am.
And am I also correct that you are familiar with the plans dated February eighteenth, which are currently being shown?
Yes, I am.
And although these plans dated February eighteenth are different than the ones reviewed in your report, is it correct that your report would not be material, materially changed by these plans?
That, that's correct.
And if I were to call on you to testify further, is it correct that your testimony would be consistent with the facts and conclusions in your report?
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you very much. I have no more questions for you, Ms. Nacki. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call my next witness, Luay Abuna. All right.
Mr. Abuna is already sworn in, just, you know.
Great, so I'll get right into it. Mr. Abuna, is it correct that you are familiar with the applicant's request at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan Court?
Yes, I am.
And are you also familiar with the plans dated February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, which are on display here?
Yes, I am.
And do these plans, although not the original plans that you based your report on, would they change the conclusions that you came to in your report?
They do not.
Thank you. And if you were called to testify further, would your testimony be consistent with the report that you had submitted to the board?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. Abuna. Finally, I'd like to call Jeff Dickinson.
Mr. Dickinson, if you're on, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Jeff Dickinson with SB Friedman Development Advisors. My address is two two one North LaSalle Street in Chicago.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do indeed.
Perfect, and we will recognize Mr. Dickinson as an expert as well, as we've reviewed his CV.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dickinson, is it correct that you prepared an economic impact assessment regarding the project at nineteen twenty-eight South Jordan, and has that report been submitted to the board?
Yes, it is correct, and it has been submitted.
Can you very briefly just go through some of the main conclusions found in your report?
Sure, we projected the economic impact of the project, that is to say, but for the, the special use being granted and thereby facilitating the transaction that is allowing the tenants to occupy the building, we estimated the economic impact to the neighborhood. And so we used average spending for office workers in downtowns as a benchmark for the kind of economic activity that might occur. We validated those numbers or tested those numbers against the supply of businesses, local businesses in the neighborhood within walking distance, and ultimately quantified an estimate of an annual sales impact to the neighborhood, primarily through restaurant activity by the employees of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year that would otherwise not occur if this transaction and this relocation of these, this business doesn't occur into the neighborhood. And so the lease term for this project is, is eleven years, and so it multiplies out to about five point seven million dollars over the, the term of the lease. And so the lease term for this project is eleven years, and so it multiplies out to about $5.7 million over the term of the lease.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. And if I were to continue to request your testimony, would that testimony be consistent with the report that you filed with the board?
It would.
Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Chair, we welcome any questions that the board might have regarding this matter.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from the board at this time? Okay, really quick. I'd like to confirm Ms. Bridget O'Keefe's understanding of the matter as it was just pushed forward.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. This matter was consistent with the plans that are presented before you this evening.
Great, great. And Ms. O'Keefe, did you, I saw everything, everything's out there. I want to give you the opportunity to ask any questions, should you desire.
No, I don't have any opportunity to. I don't need to ask any questions. I think I would just say, for the purpose of informing the board of why there was so much discussion going on, was that our clients own the properties on the east side of the street, directly across and post-garage down to Colleton. And, you know, as this site has been developed and the site to the south has been developed, it's creating a defined edge and infrastructure and streetscape. It's gonna, you know, affect the properties on the east side for generations to come. And so it was important for our clients to express their concerns that the public way by that, you know, sidewalk, parking, streets were worked for both sides of the property. And we've had some very vigorous discussion, and a lot of compromises have been made by all parties. And we're going to continue the conversation on some of the terms regarding the public infrastructure. But we do appreciate everyone's willingness to participate in this discussion and debate, and because we all are dedicated to trying to find the best solution for this community. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Yep, and thank you, everyone. Obviously, a lot of work has gone into this, and we have a very thorough report and finding of fact. I still do want to, one more time, open up the question, open up to board members the opportunity to ask any additional questions. Sounds like we've got everything. So we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for the work that went into this, and also for seeking a compromise. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
You as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, calendar number eighty-eight dash twenty-one dash S at 15 North Elizabeth. This will be Andrew Scott. I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation while everyone gets settled. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to convert the ground floor commercial space to a dwelling unit in an existing six-unit residential building with eight parking spaces, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated as of February 8th, 2021, prepared by Osterhaus McCarthy LLC Architects. Counselor, let us know when you're present.
I'm here. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the DBA, good evening. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Andrew Scott. The law offices of Dykema Gossett at 10 South Wacker Drive. I should have on, if we could confirm, Chris Dillian, who is a principal with the applicant entity, 15 North Elizabeth LLC. Is, can we confirm that Chris is on?
Yeah, go right ahead. Chris, are you on?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, thanks. John McCarthy, project architect. Johnny, there?
Let's see. I'll look to see if anyone signed in.
I don't see Mr. John McCarthy unless he's logged in as Karina Agulhar or Jay Barahas.
No. Why don't we, is Peter Pullos logged in?
Yes.
I'm here. Okay.
Great. Peter, I mean, sorry, Counselor. It's been a long day. Do you want me to swear, do you want me to swear them in right now?
Why don't we go ahead? Yeah, and we'll attempt to raise our architect. If there are questions that come up, we can certainly deal with that. But if you want to go ahead and swear us all in, that would be great.
Great. Yes. Christopher, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Christopher Dillian, 530 West Dickens, 201, Chicago, Illinois, 60614.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect. And Peter Pullos, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Peter Pullos, off to the 5500 Pearl Street, Rosemont, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect. Looks like there's Santorini or Mykonos in your background.
Yeah. I wish it was. I wish it wasn't virtual.
He's taken the pandemic very hard.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Counselor. And just to confirm, Peter, is your role, are you a land planner or?
An appraiser. Sorry, Peter Pullos, MAI appraiser.
Perfect. Okay, go right ahead, Counselor.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the applicant here, 15 North Elizabeth LLC, is seeking a special use for a ground floor residential unit in a six-unit building. It's actually already under construction. The property itself is zoned C13. It's about a fifty-one-hundred square foot site. And, you know, the property and the project was originally conceived as a, you know, you would have the typical ground floor retail, commercial types of use with residential above, as is provided in the, for the particular zoning classification. But, you know, as more and more storefronts starting to become vacant on West Madison Street, on West Washington Street, and with everything that happened with the pandemic, it became more and more apparent that it was going to be very difficult to lease this property. While it's close to Madison, it's off of Madison by, you know, quite a distance. And so there was great concern that it would just sit vacant. It would be difficult to lease up. It wouldn't be able to get quality tenants. And so the thought was to be able to activate that ground floor, put, you know, as I always say, more eyes on the street, and have, you know, an activated ground floor. The applicant decided to seek the instant special use to be able to have a ground floor unit at this particular location. I would only note, and this is set forth in Mr. Pullos's report, but the, you know, having ground floor residential is actually very, very consistent with the surrounding area. The north-south streets between Madison and Washington, particularly Racine, May, Aberdeen, all of these, you know, heavily ground floor units. So, you know, they're not proposing anything that is anywhere near out of character in the neighborhood. In fact, it's very, 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 very much in character. You know, again, going back to the whole idea, there's a lot of vacancy out there. They didn't want to add to the surplus of it and simply, you know, simply wanted to, you know, be able to activate the ground floor. We have had extensive correspondence with the alderman. He has been, you know, we haven't received any objections from him. Has asked how he wanted to help. We've been in communication with the westside neighbors, and there weren't any concerns that were raised from that organization. We have not heard from either of our neighbors. I've heard from one person as a result of, as a result of the mailing, and, you know, he was supportive of everything that we were trying to do. So that's really our case. And if it's okay, I'll just turn to my witnesses and get their, you know, ensure that they're going to testify in accordance with their affidavits of testimony. I'd appreciate it.
Yep, that's great. Go right ahead, Counselor.
Okay. Chris Dillian, again, could you just state your name for the record very quickly?
Christopher Dillian.
And I prepared an affidavit on your behalf attesting to certain matters with respect to the special use standards in this instant case. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you were called upon to testify today, would you testify substantially in accordance with what is set forth in that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Peter Pullos. Peter, I prepared an affidavit of testimony with regard to certain standards regarding the instant case before the board. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And if you were called upon to testify today, would you testify substantially in accordance with the matters that are set forth in the affidavit that I prepared for you?
Yes, I would.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I forgot to request, Mr. Pullos does appear before this board quite frequently, but I'd like to make sure that it's on the record that he's recognized as an expert, as an appraiser.
Yeah, Mr. Pullos is recognized. We have his report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't know if our architect has joined. I can ask.
Yes, he is here.
He is. John McCarthy. Is he on mute?
I'm not. I can hear you.
John, thank you very much. John, I prepared an affidavit of testimony on your behalf in which you spoke to certain standards for the special use that is the subject of the application before the board. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And real quick, real quick, sorry, Counselor. John, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is John McCarthy. I'm a licensed architect in the state of Illinois. My work address is 53 West Jackson Boulevard, Suite 1356, Chicago 60604.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thanks, Counselor Terryon.
John, let's just go back and what we were speaking to before. I prepared an affidavit of testimony on your behalf, which spoke to certain standards regarding the special use application that's currently before the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were called upon to testify today, would you testify substantially in accordance with the matter set forth in that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. We're certainly happy to answer any questions that you or any of the members of the board might have.
Okay, great. No, I guess one question I had that comes to mind is just of the ground floor retail in the area. What exists? What type of ground floor retail?
So along, if you go along Madison in particular, there's kind of many small shop retail. There are restaurant spaces that have closed. There's a little bit of office space in and around the area. It's really, but it's largely retail.
Okay. Okay, additional questions from the board? Sounds like we have everything we need. So we'll take this under consideration, but thank you, everyone, for staying on and for your time.
Yep, thank you for your time, everybody. Have a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we've got eighty-nine dash twenty-one dash Z, ninety dash twenty-one dash Z, and ninety-one dash twenty-one dash Z at 2434 North Fairfield. Counselor Turner, let me know.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner. With offices at 33 North LaSalle Street, I represent David and Amanda Swenson, the co-owners of the subject property located at 2434 North Fairfield in Chicago, which is located in an RS3 district. The property is improved with a framed, single-family residence that is well over a hundred years old and in need of extensive repairs. I should be joined by our architect, Corey Dunn, and one of the co-owners, David Swenson. Hopefully, they're still with us.
Yep, we are here, or I'm here.
Okay.
I see both. Yeah.
Okay.
You're here as well.
Okay, so the owners are seeking three variations. First, to reduce the required south side setback from two feet to 1.4 feet, with the north side setback set at 2.85 feet, for a total side setback combination from five feet to 4.2 feet. Hopefully, everyone got that. Secondly, to allow an increase in the existing floor area, not to exceed fifteen percent of the 1,878.8 square feet, which is 281.82 square feet added to the allowable floor area of 2,834.32 square feet, which totals 3,116.14 square feet. Again, hopefully, everyone got that math equation, but... And then lastly, to increase the maximum allowable building height from thirty feet to 31.01 feet in order to allow the construction of a new third-story addition and a new rear deck on an existing three-story, single-family residence. With me again are one of the co-owners, David Swenson, and Corey Dunn, the architect. Could I have the witnesses sworn in?
Absolutely. So let's go with David Swenson first. David, can you please state your name and address for the record?
David Swenson, 1240 North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60622.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, it looks like Amanda might be joining us as well. So in any event, David, you are the co-owner of the subject property with your wife Amanda. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you wish to maintain the character of the home and the neighborhood by rehabilitating the house for long-term family use. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it is your intention that the design will blend into the block, replicate the look and feel of the home, and to help maintain the historic character of the neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The home is unique due to the basement being located at or slightly below grade. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And as a result, the basement is counted toward the maximum floor area ratio for the property, correct?
That's correct.
And the home was constructed this way over a hundred years ago, which you obviously had no control over.
Correct.
Is it fair to say that the purpose of this variation is not based exclusive upon a desire to make more money out of the subject property?
That's correct.
In fact, you will make a substantial investment to preserve the historic features of the home, and that you plan to live there with your family for the foreseeable future.
That's correct.
One of the other reasons you wish to renovate instead of demolishing and instead of demolishing and rebuilding is the benefits of the home for your disabled parents for easy access. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you expound on that a little bit?
Yes. Both our mothers are disabled. My mother has COPD, and she utilizes a walker and is on oxygen 24/7. And Amanda's mother also uses a walker and has multiple sclerosis.
And so this, the design of this house with the first floor essentially at grade is obviously beneficial for your disabled parents. Is that correct?
That's correct. They'll be able to access the basement, the ground floor. We're also designing the ground floor to have, to be accessible for them, including, you know, walk-in shower and everything like that.
Okay. And then, isn't it true that the rehabilitated house, as planned, was appraised at approximately $950,000?
That is correct.
And that the average recent sale price for houses compared to comparable, comparable to what could be built without the variance, was significantly less at approximately $542,000?
That's correct.
And you were able to verify this financial information with all available data online?
That's correct.
Okay. And David, you prepared, or you signed an affidavit as part of this application, correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you would testify consistent with what is in that affidavit?
I would, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Swenson. Does the board have any questions?
Let's take all the questions at the end, so if we can get Mr. Dunn on record, and then we'll circle back with questions.
Okay. Mr. Dunn, could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. It's Corey Dunn, the architect of record. Business address is 1147 West Ohio Street, Chicago, Illinois, 606. Business address is eleven forty-seven West Ohio Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four-two.
You are licensed.
One second. Mr. Dunn, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dunn, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and the plan here is to raise the wall height on the existing third floor and, uh, construct a new rear deck on the existing building, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the property is constructed with the foundation footprint at or slightly below grade and as such, the entire basement and all incoming services, utilities and connections are essentially at grade, is that correct?
That is correct.
And because of this unique condition, the entire basement level of the home must be, be counted toward the maximum floor area ratio, correct?
Yes.
And you are familiar with the variations they are requesting here?
I am.
Um, if the lower level of the subject property was a standard basement and constructed mostly below grade, the height and FAR variations would not be required, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, with respect to the side setback variation, um, the existing side setback of one point four feet will be maintained from grade to the top of the wall at the rear addition of the home, correct?
That is correct.
And maintaining this current condition of the home preserves the appearance of the exi- existing structure and facilitates efficient construction of the extension of the existing south wall up to the proposed height, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, and there will be no change to the current setback?
There will not.
So this is, uh, this has been in its existence for well over a hundred years, as far as we all know, right?
Yes, it has.
Okay, um. Uh, the alteration of the wall placement on the top floor by point six feet would present a hardship as it is complicated to detail and weatherproof properly, adding undue cost to the construction of the exterior wall, is that true?
That is correct.
Uh, the proposed design of the rehabilitation with the existing setback maintains the historical appearance of the home as well as the surrounding Logan Square neighborhood, is that true?
Yes, it is.
And in fact, any addition to the home would not be allowed unless a side setback variation were to be granted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm going to switch gears and let's talk about the FAR variation. Um, the proposed floor area of the home is three thousand one hundred and six, sixteen point four square feet and the maximum allowed by the current zoning requirements is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four point three-two square feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
And strict compliance with the required FAR requirement presents several hardships and we'll go through those now. Uh, first, the existing third floor includes two bedrooms and unlivable storage space and the calculated floor area is limited by reduced ceiling heights at the north and south walls, correct?
That is correct.
Increasing the exterior wall height to a usable dimension of seven feet creates an increase in the floor area, but also allows the entire floor plate of the existing third floor to be used for living space, correct?
That is correct.
And at that current height, there is no additionable usal- usable space?
There is not.
Uh, secondly, maintaining the current usable square footage of the existing third floor poses a financial hardship in that the cost to renovate the structure and resolve the existing safety issues, mold and code violations, without increasing the usable square footage by raising the exterior wall height would be substantially the same as the cost to complete the work and extend the exterior wall height as proposed in the plans. Correct?
That is correct.
But the value of the resulting structure would be detrimentally impacted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, we, I think you heard, uh, David testify, the, the rehabilitated house as planned was appraised at nine, nine hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Yes.
And the average recent sale price for, price for a house comparable that could be built without the variations was signi- significantly less at approximately five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
The owners simply wish to maintain the character of the home and the neighborhood by rehabilitating the house for long-term family use and in line with other homes in the area, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you did verify this financial information, uh, with the owners with all available data, uh, available, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's now talk about the height variation. Uh, the proposed height of the structure exceeds the maximum allowed height, um, just slightly, is that correct?
That is correct.
The proposed height of the renovated third floor is increased by approximately five point two-five feet to thirty-six feet above the sidewalk grade, correct?
That is correct.
And this increase allows for the entire existing floor plate of the third floor to be used for floor areas, creating space for three modest bedrooms with closets, two baths, and a laundry closet, as well as allowing for increased floor space to create a safe and code-compliant stairwell, correct?
That is correct.
This proponent, proposed roof height is directly related to the need to increase the wall height for a usable third floor, correct?
That is correct.
And completing the proposed construction without extending the wall height and thus the roof height carries the same financial hardship as outlined in the proposed FAR variance, is that correct?
That is correct.
In addition, the proposed design replicates the existing roof pitch as well as most of the homes on the block to the north of, of the subject property, correct?
That is correct.
And it is the intention of this, this design to blend seamlessly into the block and replicate the look and feel of the home and it, for that matter, improve the value of both the subject property and those around it, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, okay, to summarize, uh, Corey, um, with respect to the hardships, uh, the basement at grade and square footage counted toward FAR, um, is, is clearly a hardship, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the old home in its, that is functionally obsolete is, poses another hardship, correct?
That is correct.
Um, and the cost to renovate, we talked about, is certainly poses a hardship.
That is correct.
Um. In your experience, dealing with older homes built essentially at grade present severe hardships, correct?
They do.
And strict compliance with the code in this case would severely limit the renovation options for this home.
That is correct.
Um. In your professional opinion, strict compliance with the regulations and standards of this zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties and hardships for the subject property, correct?
That is correct.
In your professional opinion, these practical difficulties or particular hardships are due to unique circumstances such as the at-grade original construction and are not generally applicable to other similar situated properties, is that true?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, the purpose of the variations are not based exclusively upon the desire to make money, more money out of the subject property, correct?
Correct.
In fact, in fact, the, the owners just want to renovate it to live there with their family, correct?
That is correct.
Um, if these variations were granted, in your professional opinion, it would not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located, correct?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, the proposed variations will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent properties or substantially increased congestion in the public streets, correct?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor, real quick, just sorry to interrupt you, but we've got all of this, um, in the application related to our standards. Um, so feel free to expedite, streamline, um, in case if there's any new information, um, we'll be happy to hear it.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Dunn, if you were to continue to that, testify, you would do so consistent with, uh, the statements set forth in your affidavit that was submitted in support of this application, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, I have no further questions, uh, for this witness. Does the board, uh, or the chairman have any questions?
Um, any questions from the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito. If, um, if Mr. Dunn, could you, could you tell us what the finished ceiling height is on the second floor?
So the, um, the ceiling height is actually, so we've got a vaulted ceiling condition. So what we've done is we've extended the knee wall on the side up to seven feet.
Uh-huh.
And then it, it peaks up and so it depends on what room you're in. Um, I believe we have set a ten-foot ceiling in certain rooms and there's certain rooms where just it, it, it peaks up to the, the, the ridge line.
But you have it breaking at seven.
Yes, we have it breaking at seven, so we don't even have a full eight-foot tall sidewall.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, this is Jolene Saul. Um, I want to ask about the, um, the height variation, so, um, I'll tell you what I heard and then you can correct or confirm that, um, the hardship there is, it'll, without a, the top floor isn't usable and then the rehab costs aren't financially feasible. That's what I heard. Um, so if you can confirm and or correct, um...
That is, that is an accurate statement. So currently, we have about a three-foot-high sidewall. So as a result, the usable square footage is extremely limited. We can only fit one bedroom in front, one bedroom in back. And it also has a non-compliant, uh, non-code compliant stair. And so as we raise these walls up, um, not only can we bring the usable square footage to the sidewalls and fit a third bedroom, we can also reconfigure the staircase to be, uh, meeting current code.
Commissioner, does that satisfy your question?
Uh, it, I mean, it answers my question, but I'm, I, I'm not fully sold on the hardship, I guess. Um, so that's what I'm just, uh, if I'm making faces, I'm turning that over in my head.
No worries.
I mean, it, you know, if I can speak, um, you know, if, if we were to, you know, I think frankly, if we don't do this construction, the property is probably demolished. It's in need of extensive repairs, the stairwell. You would have nightmares about falling down it every night if you tried to go down it. Um, so that's the reason for, you know, extending, extending that height. Um, we also do have a letter of support, um, that, you know, Patrick can read into the record if, if necessary, but we also have a letter of support from Alderman LaSpata for, um, for the property.
I appreciate that. Um, we just usually look for something that kind of tied to the property specifically and not necessarily just financial, but I do appreciate all of that, so thank you for the additional context.
Yeah, and they all really, um, you know, thank you to the board and they all really go together. It's all basically, they're all tied to the same thing, is basically just making, trying to make it a, a livable home. As it is right now, it's, it's not really livable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, David, for, uh, pointing out that we do have a letter of support from Alderman LaSpata.
Yep. Any other questions from the board? I want to point out that we've seen a few of these today where the basements are above grade and that counts toward, towards floor, floor area. Um, other than that, I have no questions. Um, so we will take this under consideration and thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Enjoy the weekend.
You as well, thanks. All right. We are moving on to our last matter, um, plural of the day and that's matters four oh four dash twenty dash S and four oh five dash twenty dash Z. I'm going to quick read the recommendation into the record while, um, while Council Scott Borstein gets situated. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a major utilities and, a major utilities and service to construct a salt dome and related facilities provided, number one, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by HBK Engineering LLC. Number two, the final trees and plantings are salt-tolerant species. And number three, the existing concrete block retaining wall along Grand Avenue is replaced with a salt-tolerant wall. I also understand that we have a number of objectors, um, here on this matter, um, who will get the opportunity to speak. I'm going to do a short. Um, I know a few, some of you probably heard it today, um, so bear with me. Uh, but we want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall. It's a hearing, so as we, we as the board.
Chairman, you're breaking up, we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, um, can you please mute if you're not speaking? I'm hearing a lot of feedback. Perfect. Um, okay, so again, um, this is now a town hall, it's a hearing. So we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Um, first, the applicant will put on their case and all their witnesses, then we'll turn to the objectors and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. I know we have a number of objectors here and I just asked you that, um, you're not repetitive. We don't need to hear the same points more than once and if there's repetition, I'll, um, I'll, I'll call it out. Um, after that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors and finally, we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, the board will take it under advisement. Throughout the hearing, the board members will be asking questions as they say fit. Um, so with that, Scott, let me know if you're here.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Borstein with the Law Office of Neil and Leroy. Um, you know, and I know at this late hour, um, we'll try to do this quickly. But, uh, and I, I, as it relates to the objectors, I, I wasn't sure that there was going to be any and I'll explain why, but, um, so this is a project, uh, that the PBC is undertaking on behalf of, uh, the Department of Assets, Information and Services. Uh, this is an existing salt storage facility. Uh, it's been here for over thirty years. Um, and really, the plan is, is pretty straightforward. They are going to, uh, uh, construct a dome, uh, concrete dome structure which will house the salt. Um, and of course, it's a, uh, significant environmental benefit to the site because it will prevent, you know, blowing salt, leaching salt, other things that are going on now. So it'll be definitely better, um, for the area. But otherwise, the, the operations here are not changing. Um, this has been here for thirty years. It's a, you know, well-run facility and it will continue to operate that way. Um, the biggest thing, uh, that happened really was in the course of our meetings with the community. Um, we had a plan originally that was seeking a variation for landscape relief because, you know, this is a, it's a salt facility, so we were concerned about adding a lot of new plantings. Uh, and of course, the way the facility operates too, um, you know, it's, it's all truck movement in here. So there's not really an opportunity for, for interior trees. So we submitted a plan initially that, um, sought relief from certain aspects of the landscape code. Well, in our meetings with the community, uh, and, and based on, you know, very strenuous objection and pushback from the planning department, uh, they require that we do a, a, a very robust and expensive landscape plan along that berm that you see, uh, uh, that fronts on Fortin. So we have, you know, submitted a revised landscape plan, uh, that you should have. Um, and, and those are the plans that are dated February eighteenth. And, uh, and of course, that's what we intend to, uh, build a subject, of course, to getting approval from the board. The other, the other, uh, item that was a requirement from the planning staff was the addition of thirteen parking spaces. Uh, but in fact, we, we've just, we've added thirty-four, um, to the plan. So your site plan and your landscape plan are updated and I see, right, that, that you have the current plan before you. It shows the parking, this is the site plan. And then, I don't know if you've got a picture of the landscape plan, but, um, but that's been revised as well. So th- that's the history here. I have with me, um, Elizabeth Scanlon from the PBC, Greg Hill, who is our project engineer, and Kathy Dart, who is our project appraiser. And they are all here to testify as needed with respect to the special use aspect of this plan. So I should mention that, too. As a result of the new landscaping that we added, the need for the variation, well, there is no need anymore for the variation. The proposed landscaping was determined by the planning staff to meet landscape code. So we're actually going to withdraw the variation application request and just proceed on the special use request.
Okay, noted, Counselor. So yeah, that makes sense with what you described. So 405-20-D, which is the variation, is hereby withdrawn.
Terrific. So with that, again, in light of the time, I am happy just to, you know, call the witnesses, confirm that their testimony would be consistent with the affidavits that have been submitted, and then, you know, turn it over for questions, or we can hear from the objectors if they still object, notwithstanding the landscape plan.
Yeah, and real quick, can we just have anyone who's here to object, can you raise your hand so that we know with the withdrawal of the variation, there are still objectors? Okay, I'm still gonna, I'm not seeing any, but I'm still going to circle back just as we have, we have, I know there's a cell phone number, and I don't think they can raise their hand. So I'll make sure, anyone who's here to object will get on. But with that, Scott, feel free to take this forward. We'll get the full case, but in a somewhat synthesized way now that the variation is gone, and that I'm not sure we'll have as many of them.
Okay, well, so let me just call our witnesses. First, I'll call Elizabeth Scanlon. Are you there, Beth?
Yes. I unmute, sorry.
Thank you, can you just introduce yourself for the board and for the record?
Yes, I am Elizabeth Scanlon from the Public Building Commission of Chicago. We are, the address is 50 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, 60602. I am Deputy Managing Architect with the PBC.
Great.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Also, before we go to the next, let me just ask Beth. Beth, I know you're familiar with the project, and I know you are familiar with the affidavit that was submitted on behalf of the PBC for the project, which had various findings and conclusions as they relate to the special use. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with, as I say, the information and conclusions of that affidavit?
Yes.
Okay. Our next witness, I guess Greg Hill, if you're there.
Yeah, hi, Gregory Hill, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of Illinois, HBK Engineering, 2101 West Carroll Avenue.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in tonight's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so Greg, again, you're familiar with the project, of course, because you are the engineer that has designed it, and you are familiar with the affidavit that was submitted in connection with the project. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the information and conclusions contained in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Very good. And then we have one more witness, Ms. Kathy Dart.
I'm here.
Kathy, can you give your name and address and your role in the project?
Yes, I will, good evening. My name is Kathy Dart. My address is 47 West Polk Street, 60605. I'm an MAI Appraiser, and I reviewed the property and looked at its impact on, and if it would have a negative impact on the area. And my conclusion was it would not.
Okay.
And Ms. Dart, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I'm sorry, yes, I do.
Great, and also, I have reviewed your CV, so we recognize you as an expert.
Thank you.
Terrific. So Kathy, just again, I know, as I say, you're familiar. You've been out to the site, you've looked at the plans, you've done everything that an appraiser is supposed to do in terms of preparing an impact report for this project. And of course, you submitted an affidavit in connection with that, which summarized your conclusions and findings. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those conclusions and findings contained in the affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Okay, terrific. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like either Beth or Greg to just briefly run through the plan, or is it fairly self-explanatory?
Yeah, you know, I think it would be great if they briefly ran through the plan, whichever is preferred to your team, or they can both kind of do it together.
Okay.
I can go ahead, Scott, if that's all right.
Thanks.
Yeah, so in general, our design here is, as Scott said, to not really change or affect the existing operations of the site. The main goal here was to build the monolithic concrete salt dome at the location of the existing salt pile, which will provide protection for the salt pile from wind and rain and the elements and keep it all contained at that location. We're also providing a paved access road. At the current time, the site is mostly asphalt millings. And to improve, you know, traction and prevent some tracking of dirt and debris out of the site, the proposed paved access drive will improve those options a little bit. And then, yeah, in addition to that, we're adding the 34 parking spots during the winter operations to provide parking for all the truck drivers and spreader drivers. Yeah, that's typically it. We're also providing the ring road around the outside of the dome, which is a compacted gravel ring road, and the rest of the site will be restored with a gravel surface.
Right, can you talk a little bit about the neighborhood the property is in? Just so that the board members have a greater visual of the surroundings.
Scott, did you want me to touch on that?
I mean, you can add information, but I will say that, you know, this is located within PMD 4. It's a, you know, planned manufacturing district. That's almost all the property on the south side of Grand Avenue. It's all part of a PMD. So, you know, but you can see on the north, there's the Park District facility directly across the street. And then there, you know, there's some residential that's in here as well. So, you know, it's a mix of uses, but, you know, we're next to a ComEd substation. We're bounded in by some Amtrak trains immediately to the, I guess that would be to the east of our salt dome facility. There's the award yard. And then there's some, you know, additional industrial-related uses as you go to the west along Grand.
This is Commissioner Esposito, do we have an elevation drawing? Thank you. And what Park District property is that to the west?
It's Smith Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board right now? Okay. What I'm going to do, because I just want to make sure that we're not missing any objectors. So I am going to call the people who I see in the attendees list that we don't know and just make sure they're not objecting to this. So Maury Ann Lipton, would you raise your hand if you're objecting to this?
She's with the PBC.
Okay, she is, okay. How about Karina Aguilar or Jay Barajas?
There, I think, well, Karina for sure is, oh, yeah, no, both are with the PBC.
Okay, okay. Jay Barajas is as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So I hear no hands, so I just want to give one more opportunity so that we don't miss anybody. So just please raise your hand if you're objecting. All right. Okay, there's one person on the phone that can't raise their hand, and.
Sorry, this is Kamal, I've unmuted that person on the phone, so if they wish to speak, they can.
Great, okay. If you wish to speak, 312 number, sorry, we're at the end of the day, so we're just making sure we get everything right. It's 312-414-9281.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. This is Robin Owens. I was calling in via my mobile phone. I'm from AIS, Deputy Commissioner.
Great, hi, Robin, yeah, thank you for joining.
Hi. Yeah, I do not object, just to be clear.
Thank you for letting us know, or else I was going to call the number myself, just to figure it out.
Sorry for the duplicate login, but that is my number as well.
No worries at all. Okay. Any additional questions from the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just one item that I want to clarify from the PBC and AIS. One of the conditions that was suggested by or required by planning staff was the actual replacement of this, what's now really like a block kind of footwall that runs along Grand Avenue. And, you know, we had initially talked to them about maybe just replacing it or fixing it, I'm sorry, repairing it as needed, yeah, you can see it running along there. And so, you know, the requirement is that it be replaced. So I want to confirm with the PBC and AIS that, you know, number one, we agree that, you know, if we're going to do anything, you know, that we replace it. But also, you know, if we don't need it at all, we can remove it. I just want to make sure that that's an acceptable, an acceptable option here. Beth, can you, you know?
Yeah, let me clarify a little bit there. The wall that's there is about a foot and a half tall. And that streetscape there has about a 10-foot rise from the street level to the level of the parking area and the base of the salt dome. And so the landscape plan is planning on removing the vegetation that's there now and replacing it with something that is more planned and more appropriate for the location. And so the question is whether that landscape wall at the street level is required to remain, or if we can just have the landscape coming down to the sidewalk without the wall in place there. As much as anything, it would be eliminating an item that would require future maintenance.
That's right. So that's what I'm asking, because on our plan, it says repair, you know, as needed, but the planning staff has said that they are requiring that it be replaced. So I'm suggesting that maybe we don't need it at all, and that if that's the case, no, there not be a requirement that it be replaced if it's not needed. Is that something the board is willing to agree to?
So we need the Department of Planning and Development to sign off on that. Change, and let's see if we can get somebody. Oh, and Nancy, Nancy, feel free to speak, yeah. Just put your name and address to the record really quick.
Absolutely, I'm Nancy Razovich. I'm an Assistant Commissioner with the Zoning Bureau at the City of Chicago.
Great, thank you, Nancy. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, go right ahead.
I would say that it would be helpful if we modify that condition to say that if a wall is needed, it has to be replaced because it's in such disrepair. The other concern is that if it is replaced, that it be replaced with a material that's, you know, not going to be corrosive by salt materials. So those would be the two caveats. To Scott's point, to, you know, Attorney Borstein's point, if it can be done in such a way that that wall does not need to be replaced, and there isn't any sort of implications in terms of that needing to be a retaining wall, then, you know, we would work with that. But, you know, the bigger concern is that it's in such disrepair that just repairing what's there is just not going to be a good fix. So, like I said, I think we would support the condition that, you know, that we would work with them to determine whether or not that wall needs to be replaced or maintained at all. But if there needs to be a wall there, it has to be replaced as opposed to repaired.
Okay, Beth, does that sound reasonable?
Yes, understood.
Okay, so Chairman, I guess if you can, or, you know, subject to agreeing on language with the department, but something to the effect of, right, you know, if it has to be retained, you know, then we come up with a salt-resistant type of wall, replacement wall. But otherwise, it's not, we don't have to have it.
Okay, and I think we have Steve Valenziano on as well.
Yeah, hi. Hi, Steve. Chairman, Steve Valenziano, Department of Planning and Development. The applicant put on their plans that they would replace and repair as needed. The wall is in very bad shape, and I don't know how you don't have it unless they're going to redo the entire slope there. So they need to replace and repair the wall. It's probably like two or three blocks high and with a capstone. It's in terrible shape, it's crumbling, it's on Grand Avenue, it's across the street from a public park. And as part of the improvements to the site, we would like to see that repaired and replaced.
Well, okay, what we're suggesting is that in the event that, you know, we're doing quite, as I say, large and significant re-landscaping of this area. So we just weren't sure if we are, in fact, going to need the wall. So that was all, you know, and if we don't need it, then it's gone. And of course, then you remove an eyesore and you eliminate a lot of maintenance issues. But if we do need it, we'll replace it, that's what we're asking.
Okay, if you can show to the Department of Planning and Development that you do not need the retaining wall, the retaining. that you do not need the retaining wall, the retaining, the concrete block containing wall along Grand Avenue's sidewalk. If you can show that, then it can be removed. But then landscaping and the berm would go all the way down to the public way. If it needs, if you need that, then it needs to be completely replaced, not just repaired, in spot repair. It needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I think that's what we're agreeing to, right, Beth?
Yes, that's understood, that it would need to be completely replaced, not just repaired.
Okay, and you will submit any drawings and plans to the department to concur or determine and concur that the wall would not be needed in any way?
Yes, we would definitely provide you drawings to indicate that the wall is not needed if that is the conclusion there. Yes.
Okay.
Great. I think, so that's it from our end. Unless the board has any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions from the board? Sounds like none. We will take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for staying on. We appreciate your time.
Thanks so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Okay, making sure that we truly are done with our matters. It looks like we are. So, I move that we convene in the closed session, closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purposes of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session, and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Coy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we're gonna move to consider testimony. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, hello everyone. Can take these out. I moved to we I moved that we return to open session. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Okay, I am a yes, we are back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. Great. I move to approve application for calendar number six twenty nine dash nineteen dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I am a yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve app I move to approve application for calendar number twenty four dash twenty one dash Z and in tandem forty two dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number um forty four dash twenty one dash X. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number forty seven dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number forty eight dash twenty one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty dash twenty one dash X. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty one dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty two dash twenty one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty three dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty four dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty five dash twenty one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number fifty six dash twenty one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yeah.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications, applications for calendar numbers fifty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z, fifty-eight dash twenty-one dash Z and fifty-nine dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixty-one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers sixty-two dash twenty-one dash Z and sixty-three dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixty-four dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixty-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixty-six dash twenty-one dash Z and I want to note that sixty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z has been withdrawn. So for calendar number sixty-six dash twenty-one dash Z, Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter has been approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventy dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventy-one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventy-two dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventy-three dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya, or sorry, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers seventy-four dash twenty-one dash Z and seventy-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventy-six dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers seventy-seven dash twenty-one dash Z, seventy-eight dash twenty-one dash Z and seventy-nine dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yeah.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers eighty-one dash twenty-one dash Z and eighty-two dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Twi- seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers eighty-three dash twenty-one dash S and eighty-four dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers eighty-five dash twenty-one dash S and eighty-six dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number eighty-seven dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Recused.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number eighty-eight dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers eighty-nine dash twenty-one dash Z, ninety dash twenty-one dash Z and ninety-one dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers four oh four dash twenty dash S and four oh five dash twenty dash Z. Sorry, let me repeat that. Four oh five dash twenty dash Z has been withdrawn. So I move to approve application for calendar numbers four oh four dash, four oh four dash twenty dash S only. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. Okay, I move to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar numbers four oh nine dash twenty dash Z, four thirteen dash twenty dash Z, four eighteen dash twenty dash S, four twenty-one dash twenty dash Z and four twenty-two dash twenty dash Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. With the exception of board calendar numbers twenty-five dash twenty-one dash Z, thirty-four dash twenty-one dash Z, thirty-five dash twenty-one dash Z, thirty-six dash twenty-one dash Z, forty dash twenty-one dash S and forty-one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone for your time today and all your hard work as always. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you again everyone, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks. Good night.